That would be.
Please, uh, ensure that your telephones are muted or off. Yeah. How are you?
If they haven't signed in or publicly signed it, please do so. And I got seven P M. So, uh, please call me to your seven P M. Please turn me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Amen.
Roll call recognition business. We have Zoom up in running.
Yes. We do. All right, Greg Bradley.
Yeah.
Keith.
Here.
Tom Backers.
Here.
Noa Childs.
Here.
Christine Johnson here. Okay, we're all here.
Okay, disclosure accomplished if anything is done. I am. Bradley, I have none.
I have none. I have none.
Google up the agenda.
There's a couple of things that need to be added to the unfinished business. That would be the change to, you know, the last meeting minutes. So it would be third page, the last meeting minutes. And about the three people on the way down. Uh, basically, it's, uh, wrong committee. Wrong committee has informed of the request of G F A to do the design of three lanes downtown. Township needs to initiate contact with the add to unfinished business. See if that's been done.
Oh, okay, so not the minutes themselves. I was saying if I don't over automatically approved after the meeting. But you want to add the.
I want to be in the queue of that township needs to initiate contact.
Okay. That.
Okay. Uh, item B under unfinished business, nine, nine D. G F A on the, on the lane. Downtown lane.
Yes. And then, uh. There's also some, uh, spread in block at home, owner, you just need a helping on that. Uh, the town administrator was supposed to look at the site.
Seth Snyder Road.
Yeah, that was, um. Yes, Snyder Road.
Yeah, I went up there, uh. In the last week. And there were no barricades. There is a burn. Um, where the road narrowed into the two track.
They just wanted to update on that and then, uh. Uh, the biz, which I see join Ross. And then on the. Last page. We've got the same eighty minutes, uh, basically joining the straight lines and fill out any employee paperwork. I'm going to come in there and make sure that's what he does.
Uh, during his zoning reportable. Change sure that.
Yeah.
Thank you. One amendment. Let us. To approve the agenda, amend.
You have a question.
That, yeah. Hey, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oh. Oh, comment? During none, moving on.
Well, sure, if you'd like to.
You have, you have to go on your public comment, time to get some mileage stuff.
Uh, yeah, for your mileage, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Florida. All right. Let me come up right here so I can look at everybody. So over the last ten years, um, central dispatch has been funded. Should back it up. Over the past thirty years, dispatch has been funded, funded by the nine one surcharge on your phone bills. Uh, that surcharge over the past ten years has stayed stagnant, so to speak. Uh, six hundred, oh, six hundred and twenty-five thousand, uh, with annual revenue each year. Uh, and we all know inflation has continually gone up in the last few years. It really has, uh, uh, put us through the winter. Um, that being said, we are requesting point six mils on a, on the August sixth ballot for an increase. That, the, the intent, um, right now is that that will be a five-year mileage. With, with, we know we'll ask for a renewal five years after that, probably many years after that, if this works as a, as a plan. Uh, what we did is a ten-year plan, try to project what we're going to need over ten years. We're going to need about twelve point five million dollars to operate dispatch over a ten-year period. That will include replacing all the existing equipment and doing some much-needed, uh, upgrades to current equipment. New technology, those kind of things. That should also allow for funding ten years from now to start either replacing or being close to replacing that equipment. Give or take the, those equipments. So they're big pieces of equipment. There are the phone systems for dispatch, the answer back one. They're all recorders and then the radio systems. The radio systems, we're really looking at some upgrades to enhance some of the communication services and, um. We call them deficiencies we find in, in, uh, uh, dispatching to all the law enforcement and fire and E M S sequences. Basically, we have one person in there. We're trying to buy equipment that, uh, can modulate the noise is one of our big goals. So it's not, you know, if, if, uh, I talk on the radio and it's. Loud and basically blowing somebody out of their seat in there and then Deputy Crane talks and he's talking real soft. There's equipment out there that we do not have right now to modulate that. So it, so it levels that up. So. Talked about this a long time, but, uh, won't take too much of your time. That point six mil raise about six hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars per year. Or, um, six point three million over ten years. So with that, between that and the surcharge, we'll meet our twelve point five million need over that ten-year period. We split it into five-year votes. That way the board can, the board commissioners can look at this and say. Yep, we're on track. We're, we'll be all right for a ten-year period. Or we're too high or we're too low. They can make that adjustment almost five years. The attorney said we can do a ten-year mileage if we want, but I think everybody will just. Kind of stick their head in the sand and not pay attention. Needs to be paid attention to, um, just because of rising costs. So. This will, um, this will generate the revenue we need. Assuming tax values stay what they are and, and, uh, and inflation doesn't go above five percent. So we did, on the standard plan, we did five percent a year every year. That's give or take on each line. The vendors that sell us our equipment say they know five percent a year tax on all of the different charges and stuff is, is coming. This past year, health insurance went up thirteen percent. So. We're going to have to make adjustments for that. But each line item is not going to go up five percent. We're assuming. So I just use a five percent across the board, trying to do best yet for the future. Uh, you know, what the next ten years is going to do and try to make that mark. And I didn't want to ask for any more than I absolutely thought we would need to make this happen. A couple of questions that came up as I was putting this together, they, somebody asked about our funds. Why can't county hour funds cover this? It's not enough. And the county's pretty much allocated all those our funds up. And then somebody asked why introduced, where is the surcharge on the phones? The surcharge, the state cap, so that three dollars, we're at two fifty-eight, so that, that extra forty-two cents would not generate enough revenue to make that six point, uh. Six hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars annually. It only make about a hundred and twenty still fall at nine dollars each year. So that's my quick spiel about it. We're, the county administrator is putting on, uh, some. Open houses, town halls, whatever you want to call them, uh, the eighteenth. The eighteen, the twenty-second and the twenty-fifth of June, at the Calum. I can, I can give you the time, but he's going to post them on the, and it allows for me more time to explain to people that have in-depth questions about this. Um, I've been trying to get all the township to give a five to ten minute. Quick overview of this, but I'm willing to take any questions and talk as long as you'd like, but I don't want to. Take over your meeting either.
Is this, is this money, is this going to be your mark?
Yep, there's going to be more district.
Okay, I have a second question here.
Yeah.
Uh, first of all, does this replace the existing mileage?
No, there is not an existing mileage. It, it will supplement the existing surcharge.
Okay, so, and this is five years for six mils?
Point six mils.
Point six.
Yeah.
So that's the bottom line, five years.
Yeah, so on a hundred thousand dollars, how's it sixty dollars a year?
Those two meetings, those two, three meetings are, are everybody's ask for tax. Library.
Yes, so I.
Everybody. Everybody.
I won't be the only one. There's renewals on the ballot, the county road, Calum, library and, um, soil preservation. So tho- those will all, those folks will also be there on those, on those meeting dates. So. Any other questions pertaining to this? Um, told everybody, ask fire, fire personnel, former president, neighboring fire personnel. Um, my, my biased opinion is we want dispatch in our county. We don't want to farm it out to another county. If, if the mileage fails, we'll have to act with commissioners and ask if they can afford the six hundred thousand dollars a year essentially. Um, and. I don't want to speak for the commissioners, but I, I think that I'm going to have a, have an uphill fight there to, to get that allocation of general fund. And, um, if we have to outsource it, I don't know who we would outsource it to. It would have to be one of the bigger dispatch centers that would be able to absorb our, you know, our call on. So.
Will you be emailing notice for the meeting?
I can email you notice. I know the administrator was trying to put pamphlets or flyers together for it. So. And I think he was up here and you met him.
Right.
Last month, yeah.
All those dates are posted in our meeting at the two.
Are they? Okay.
Thank you.
So, and then actually, I think Jody. McGee has me coming up here or is allowing me to come up here on the fifth at noon. To the senior luncheon and talk about this also. So she asked me to do some senior lunches. And, uh, I'll be up here on the fifth at, at noon to talk about this too. I think I'll get more. I can spend more time up here at that and. So, now any other questions? The only thing.
I'll go ahead. I got one for you.
Yeah.
How you are the sheriff. Okay, last year our eight thousand dollar, um, overtime, uh, expense for the fourth of July weekend.
Yeah.
You said you were over that for hours by fifteen hundred dollars, I believe. And you.
Okay. I believe you.
Department cover.
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, that is on the agenda for, or it should be. Please.
Can I put it in the packet?
Yeah.
So, so on that, it would be the same deal as before. If we, it's up to eight thousand. If the board is willing to cover additional overtime for the entire sheriff's department, Deputy Creighton's not included in that. That mix of, uh, money, that's totally separate. That's for the actual staff that we are going to run the four days up here, thirty-two to six.
How many do you usually have here?
From, uh, law enforcement staff, uh, in- including Deputy Creighton, just for easy numbers, uh, we'll run seventeen this year. So everybody, I, I have a fun myself though, because I, I'm on food duty of making sure everybody gets fed up here. So. But every, everybody else is up here, including two of our corrections officers.
Just add includes D N R.
Oh, no, that, that is just Calcasas Sheriff's Office. First, D N R usually puts two votes and then M S P usually does. Half a dozen, two a dozen guys who are getting on the day and.
Okay, so we're just paying for the overtime for the sheriff's.
And probably the jet ski.
Okay.
Probably the jet ski too.
Um, yeah, well, really, I haven't reached out to Jason yet to, to see if that's a.
When to, I want to send us the bill. It says refill all the money and I haven't seen an invoice.
I will go to drag it down. He was supposed to email it to you, uh, probably ten months ago.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. So I will, I will physically get it. So, but thank you. I appreciate that.
I just want to do, uh, realize this is first responders. We, I just want to thank you young men, uh, make money in law enforcement for our department.
Yeah.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
I've got one. Michelle Jackson is here. She's the next treasurer. I want everybody to greet her. She's from, well, she's the only one on the ballot, so I'm assuming she's. Let's put it that way.
Filing deadline for independence. Okay, that was the partisan ballot. Filing deadline for independence forty-five days prior to the primary. So, so we can still buy.
Yeah, true, true.
July eighteenth.
July eighteenth, okay.
Okay.
She's the only one on the ballot right now. Let's put it that way.
Okay, uh, guess we're in special order of business.
All right.
I'm trying to see what's going on. Uh, I did get a response from, uh, legal. On a bunch.
Do the minutes first since you have them first on the agenda?
What's that?
Do you want to do the minutes first since you have those first on the agenda?
Uh, yeah, okay, um. I can, because I got backwards. Um, minutes on the eighteenth, I read. I didn't find a problem.
I didn't.
Anybody else?
Other than what Joe just brought up.
Corrections to the minutes of the eighteenth.
Make a motion to accept the meetings, minutes, uh, minutes, uh.
I'll second that.
Hey, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close.
That was April eighteen.
April eighteen. Uh, we did have, uh, a meeting to hire, uh, part-time custodian. And I have the recording and some notes, but, uh, no minutes for done for that. So I'll have them. Uh, next meeting. Most correspondence.
Well, we do have the, for the April twenty-seventh. Short term.
The S T R. We didn't add that, but.
I wrote it in mine.
S T R meeting, I reviewed those two. Um, basically just listed the sections that we went through and reviewed. And corrected and then a lot of discussion at the end was over, uh, several things concerning our one limitation. At the end of this agenda, uh, we will be setting a new, uh, short-term rental date and try and complete this process. So we can, uh, basically, uh, give it a final review, send it to legal. And, uh, see if there's any corrections we have to make legally. To enforce that. And hopefully, uh, after that. Uh, there'll be a public hearing on it. So everybody can put in their due sense for it on the final draft. And, uh, it'll go up, uh, it'll be voted on at the public hearing. So be an up and down vote after the public hearing.
So I'll make the motion to approve the April twenty-seventh minutes as presented.
So.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Are you aye?
I'm aye. Yeah, I, I'm aye. I am.
Okay, now.
Okay.
You could, you could, where's please?
Uh, yes.
Jody McGee.
Yeah, we did. And, uh, she met with Craig, uh, this past week. To get started.
Jody.
Jody. It's probably the one I own now.
It's okay.
Then, then the number of that stuff.
Yes. Okay. Okay, course times from legal. Uh, basically I asked them a few questions. Uh, one was, uh, on the Verizon issue. Uh, where we have, uh, them reporting us to collection agencies. Basically, I have a release to sign, uh, to basically, uh. What we would do is we figured, uh, twelve hundred and fifty dollars. Was for, uh, the three months that we owed and the phone. For maintenance, the faulty phone that was collecting all kinds of. Using all kinds of data, uh, without even being turned on. And, uh, basically, uh, I have a form for release of information that, uh, the collection agency and, uh. Our legal counsel can talk to each other. It's basically all it is. And then we'll offer Verizon twelve hundred and fifty bucks. If they cash the check, we're done with them. So that's the premise. Uh, Memorial Park, I met with, uh. Met with Jerry Cannon, uh, and Dave Israel are basically the Michigan Heritage Research Foundation. Uh, they are still in business. Uh, they have, uh, a lease on the M seventy-two property. Uh, which is supposed to be a veteran's award. Uh, I asked them if they had any money. He said, no. Okay, so, uh, they have a follow-up with that. They do have somebody that's checking out their antipathy, at least, uh, to be started. That and what it is, is, uh, basically a Vietnam veteran. Um. And, uh, they want to start with, uh, Calcasas County and basically put erect monuments for all eighty-three counties of Michigan. Um, evidently, uh, they're in contact with Wayne County. Who wants three monuments because they have so many names. So that's an issue also. But originally, what they would want to do is pave the walking trail and, uh, plant the flag. And, uh, set up the Calcasas Monument. So I told them, I'd see if, well, we could get any federal money for that. Uh, but other than that, we're at Numbask. The other thing is, uh, Josh Gill wants to put, uh, basically a disc golf course in there and, uh. Uh, we discussed that. Evidently, there's like forty acres on the east side of the park that doesn't involve the memorial. And, uh, so Josh has basically got the green light to try and do that. That would be part of the parks and rec system. And be a rentable.
So the foundation would only handle the memorial itself.
Right.
The rest of the property with the parks.
They have no objection to using that eastern park for a disc golf course because that's what kicked us off. Okay, I think he went to the Parks and Rec meeting after.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, probably rehash the same.
And, yeah, and, uh, Jerry was there and the discussion went in his committee. And the discussion, I believe, is something that's workable between everybody involved.
Okay, and the thing about it is.
And they've already started working on it together at separate times, but they both.
Oh, trying to get some money and some things. So that situation's hanging in the balance and, uh.
Mr. Drew has a comment, question.
Just one question if you could, Mr. Chair, uh, I looked at that contract and you were mentioning some about it being rentable space. I don't think we're allowed to make money off of it. Uh, any revenue goes to the state.
Well, the, the thing about it is, is the proceeds could be donated to the committee.
Well, that may be of.
Oh, because they are.
But we, we, the township can't earn any.
Right, the thing would be how to run it, how to separate it from the park itself. So anyway, that's, uh, just a discussion we had. And the other thing was, uh, the request for.
Yeah, it's talking.
We just got back, I think, seven.
Is he supposed to look at you too?
It's looking all over. Everybody that knocks at looks at him.
Okay, I have a task, but I was able to find for email between, uh, Brad Weirda and, uh, Melinda Boy. So those are contained here. They're still looking. Um, and the other thing is, is we have to, uh, figure out how we want to proceed this stuff, if we want to proceed. Collect taxpayers' money back for, for that. Okay, um, where do I put my. Agenda?
I'll send her a letter stating to be owed this much money and she didn't pay it, right?
Uh, right, we, we sent her a friendly request, uh. To offer a monthly payment plan for the amount of four thousand five hundred dollars.
And she's not going to accept it.
I think it was four thousand five.
Letter back from her attorney.
Right.
Saying, uh, we owed her a thousand dollars.
No, I think from the audit, if I remember correctly, that was when I first started, but I remember I had to start right away because it was payroll. And we wrote her paycheck. And I think we didn't mail it out right away, so probably when we did the audit, it didn't show up as clear, but it did clear. It's, she has gotten that paycheck. So that's not even accurate.
That's, well, the other thing is, um, her. Shall we say clerical error with, uh, withholding for the state and federal.
Yeah, I just got a call from the I R S for the two thousand twenty-one, nine forty-one forms that never were turned in.
Right, and failure to file those. And she did cost us, uh, two thousand dollars in extra audits, one for my payroll and one for, um, hers.
So we could bump up the bill.
So.
And then ask for.
So that's six, so that's six thousand dollars. It's taxpayer money. So, uh, what we have to do is deal with that either in closed session or just, uh. File charges or request the attorney to file charges.
The, the prosecutor would like to see the audit. I asked him if he got it yet. Huh? That's why I mentioned, I asked if you could take it up there. And the other thing, um, I think it's in the minutes. About FOIU and FOIU and the, all the conversations, phone conversations and texts between her and, and, uh, the attorney where to.
Anyway, uh, so additional action, I don't want to put that on the agenda anywhere other than, uh. So what I'm looking for is a recommendation for additional actions from either the township attorney. Or the prosecuting attorney. And the thing about it is, is what do we charge her?
Let him. Give him the audit?
I think, uh, recommendation from the township attorney would be advising. Okay, um.
I just know the prosecutor wants it because he got all the, he got all the paperwork on it. The sheriff's department investigated it. They turned it over to the prosecutor.
Yeah.
And we didn't hear anything back. I didn't hear anything back from the prosecutor.
I didn't.
Have you guys heard anything back from the prosecutor? No.
Okay.
That was the, I mean, when, in the minutes, that was, there were three suggestions, either. Um. Counteroffer. Or drop it because it would cost mortuary food or turn it over to the prosecuting attorney.
Okay, so.
Those were the recommendations up from the attorney.
Okay, so if he's got all the information, then he would determine the charges.
He just needs the audit.
Okay, so.
So we're turning it.
So.
Because that's the proof.
I would make the motion that we turn it over to the prosecuting attorney and whatever happens, it happens.
Right.
That's my motion.
Okay. I have a second.
I'll second it.
Roll call vote. This is the turnover, what information we have to the prosecuting attorney, right, along with the, along with the audit.
He's got the original stuff from the sheriff's department. Now they just need the audit.
Okay, uh, also our, uh, township attorney has demonic copies of all the documents you provided with my review. So if he needs that, I mean, we can get that.
Make them up. Then we turn it over to the prosecutor.
Okay, uh, Tom Backers.
Yes.
Greg Bradley.
Yes.
Joey Childs.
Yes.
Albert Keith.
Yes.
Christine Johnson, yes.
Hey, better in the park, we already discussed. Yeah, an archive computer is online now, so, uh, scanner works. Okay, the printer's being serviced right now, so everything's kind of self-contained in the zoning administrator's office. Once I get an idea of a searchable, a search engine for it. Uh, we will divide everything up, uh. Uh we will divide everything up paperwork-wise, uh you know, like uh zoning would have uh land excrements, land divisions. Uh rezoning requests, all that paperwork would just go in there, so. Uh we may have to hire somebody to do this.
I actually, uh my sister used to work for insurance and she, in several offices, uh moved them to digital forms. And she's created all of those systems for insurance companies and she knows exactly what we need. And she offered to take the job if we needed it.
We'll discuss, but anyway, it's powered up and the scanner's online. I think it's amazing.
Yes.
Right, I understand that. Uh but uh we took away the zoning application, land excrements with like twelve pages in there. Slipped it in the scanner, hit the button. It was like. Uh it took half a second, twelve pages. Looked at the computer, all the copied images were perfect. So this thing will do a hundred pages in minutes. Anyway, that's where that sits, uh reports.
I have one more thing on that, that Noah from San Terras has been working on the treasure computer. To get the cemetery online. And we tried to do it the other day because he said he could do it remotely and I was up and ready to go and. He found out that it couldn't be, but we're going BSNA and Tuesday, two o'clock, we're gonna do it. I have to be down the hall. And have it there and he'll finish it out.
Uh the other thing is that finally got a response out of Consuming Center. Uh they're supposed to be out here Tuesday or Wednesday to do a site survey and then put move our service at Freedom Park West. From where it's at, two feet to the new meter base. Uh and uh then we'll get the digital sign hooked up with Morrison and uh. And let's see if it works as advertised. I mean, it's been four years in the making, so. But anyway, uh they're supposed to be out here next week and Morrison's Morrison Electric is in the loop. So when we get a date and a time for this guy to come out here and uh do the site survey. And give us a date for the project completion, Morrison will be in the loop. Okay, uh treasure financial reports.
Where did we put, did we put in there Jennifer Graham? Because I talked to her tonight. I talked, we texted back and forth, so I want to give a report on that, wherever you want to put it. It was Joe brought it up because it was in our last minutes.
What's?
Jennifer Graham, and that was about, um that was about the road. Do we wait for the road to report that?
Yeah.
Okay.
He talked about GFA. He put that, he put that.
Yeah, I I texted her because I said we needed to um have an answer.
Okay, treasure is reported.
Okay, I got a couple of things. Um everybody's got the report. I would like to have this report put on the website. I think that everybody can see it. Is there any problem?
No, there shouldn't be, uh just.
Okay. And I will be um.
What, put on the website?
Yeah.
No. Oh, the more public information is out there.
Yeah, absolutely. Sergeant.
Okay, and also, um my deputy starts training a new deputy tomorrow. And she'll be working with her, your board approved up to three months. And that goes the start of the tax season, so I'm assuming it's gonna take a little bit longer than that, but there's a lot to learn because we're. All online and we're taking credit cards and we're doing a whole bunch of stuff, so we'll see how that goes. Friday, she's gonna be training her.
And I'm quite sure, your name is Marjorie?
My name is Michelle.
Okay, and you're you're on treasure at the moment?
Yes.
Okay, my wife had a question which is pertinent. Uh if she's gonna be sitting in on some of these training sessions, is that legal?
It is. I checked, I checked and this, she isn't getting paid, but she can shadow. She can shadow the training.
Basically, she can't touch the computer?
No.
Alright, so I just wanted to make that.
Yep.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Oh, or one other thing, um when they took the tires off the ramp, the back end, the back, the brakes were locked up. Uh the calipers were shot, uh and the drums were worn. Uh he called me. And I authorized, I believe it was eleven hundred dollars to replace the rotors, calipers and the brake pads on the rear end of that.
You're not allowed to authorize over a thousand dollars.
Understand that, but he had everything up. Other than that, it would have been. Basically go to the board, have it approved, take it back in, and then there would have been a labor charge tapped out of that. So it was a safety issue. I made the decision.
Emergency situation.
I just wanted to make the board aware of that.
That's.
So you will get an extra bill.
That's one of my things that I have here.
Okay, alright, so. I confess.
Thank you.
Right, I I spent over a thousand dollars, which is not my purview, but it was a basically critical situation. Tires off, I just thought it would just tear up, make it safe. So anyway, that's been done.
Alright, I uh provided everybody with an up current uh fund balance report. And I did include taxes in that. I know that was a question before, why that wasn't on there? Does that, I think that was the only thing that you guys had asked me for. If there's no questions on that. Moving on, we have the expenses by vendor detail. If everybody's had a chance to look through that and any questions on any payments that were made?
Yeah, we got Spectrum straightened out.
For the most part.
Double bill again.
No, no, in fact, Angie and I go to great lengths to make sure what bill is for because. There are so many bills and we just talked to Derek for the fire department. He is contacting Spectrum and having them combine all of their bills together on one bill. Separated by accounts, so I think I want to go ahead and do that with the township too, so that we're not getting multiple bills. And we don't know what we paid and what we haven't paid and what's for what. If it's all on one bill. Then I can look at it and say, this is for here, this is for here, this is for here, and this is for this. So I'm gonna contact them and see about getting that done.
And also, they owe us a phone line for the treasurer. Now you're.
No, her phone line, she's got her phone. Well, we have to move it, but.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but she needs a phone line.
When we first talked to them, they said that they could actually um. Use my cell, but the people calling it would would go automatically to my cell, so I can actually get calls anytime. As well as if I was in the office on that, so I'm hoping they do that. The other end doesn't know it yourself.
Actually, you don't have to get on the phone to check your voicemail. They send you an email.
Yep, yep, I'm looking at that now, yeah, so.
Which is really nice. Any other questions on the expenses? Alright, moving on. So I did receive a bill from Schaefer Auto. Um I I actually don't have. The invoice with this check. I wrote the check and then I went, wait a minute, two thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars. I think this is for tires or?
It was for both.
Okay.
Because the original tire bill was fifteen point four.
Was it Schaefer's where you?
Yes, and money, and money pulled the tires.
Because I also got in email.
I have no idea.
Nikoff Tire and. Sales and service. And and all it said was thank you and this.
Right.
Michigan sales using.
I have to call them, find out what this is with that stuff. I think he had to order the tires, but. I think that is basically so they have our sales type app on the on the tire sale.
Okay.
So that would be.
Okay, so the the Schaefer, no, this is for two thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars, so that's not what you just authorized. You authorized eleven hundred dollars. What is this?
That's the tires and the breaker repair combined.
Okay.
You didn't get an invoice for that?
It probably already got filed away.
Okay.
So it must be in the.
Should have a breakdown for the bricks and the drums, rotors.
Okay.
Uh and the calipers. I would imagine he wants that tax exemption for the tires. Because he had to order the tires.
Okay. I will double check on that and get a hold of Schaefer's about this form. I think that must be for them. Um then we had a an approval amount of twenty-five hundred dollars for fire department for the Bluetooth speakers. And microphones and the invoice came up to two thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and twelve cents. So we need the four hundred and forty-nine dollars and twelve cents approved.
Okay.
So motion to approve.
Oh, second now. So Greg is now.
Yeah. Four hundred and forty-nine dollars and twelve cents. At the fire department and that was paid through the fire fund.
Okay.
Alright, roll call vote. Tom Backers. Christine Johnson, yes. Albert Keys.
Yes.
Greg Bradley.
Yes.
Joey Childs.
Yes. I got one little question, oh question here, Munson Occupational Health, is that the physicals? Do we have? Is it on the new employees that we have there? It's been a while. We've had them for a while.
Whenever we pay Munson Occupational Health, yeah, it is.
Do we get the reports on that? Who reads those reports when they come in?
When the reports come in, they come in the mail. Angie gets the mail, she opens them, she files them away, she sends Derek a notice of who passed.
Okay, they don't keep any of the reports in there?
No, they don't.
Um I think really a board member should.
No.
Other than. Or Derek. No, Derek will get them.
Pass, not pass. Okay, that's, that's a HIPAA violation.
Yeah, yeah.
This this board is out of order. We need to stick to the agenda, please.
Um okay, the last thing I have, um sorry, I forgot about these. They were in my pile. I have a invoice for promotions and that's for the handicapped toilet at Heritage Park. And then an invoice for um the fertilization at Heritage Park. And I sent these, oh, and also Pro Image. For public access signs. I sent a question to Parks and Rec regarding these um. The handicap toilet at Heritage and the fertilizing at Heritage to make sure that those were their invoices to pay.
Right.
Because we had talked about putting the handicap toilet rental on Parks budget rather than township. I never got a response from them and I haven't paid this invoice yet. I need to know.
They were under the impression and I sent them a copy of the millage. That the millage that we got was just for grants and it's not. I said, when you read it, it's not. They said, that's what it's supposed to be. I said, no, it's, yeah.
The millage that you got is for an operating budget.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
These, these things need to be charged against Parks and Rec.
Okay, so.
Uh so, no, not spending general fund money and reserving their uh their millage money for grants. That's part of the process, but it's.
Um the Pro Image invoice that they sent, it's actually a total of seven eighty-three thirty-two, but there's two different invoices on here. I think this is a statement and that they're both under five hundred and I believe we approved each of purchases under five hundred. Okay, alright, so that can just still have to be taken. Thank you.
Okay, so you're done Sheriff's Department, uh Fourth of July issue, first of all, uh basically. Uh we did pass in the past, we proposed Lake Street access. So that the Sheriff's Department can set up their first responders, ambulance, the jet ski, paddy wagon. Uh whatever else they need. I don't think this requires a resolution of approval from the board. So uh.
Okay.
I would, I would move that we approved the closure of the Lake Street exit. Or not exit, public access. And what was that from the third? You wanted.
July third through the sixth.
What time? You want us to close it?
Um if we can close it at midnight, the morning of the third, we'll come up and post it.
Okay.
During the, during the midnight shift, then.
And then uh that would be, the follow Monday would be the sixth?
Uh no, that would be through Saturday night.
Saturday night?
Yeah, so we can both, if we can close it through Saturday night at midnight.
Okay, so it would be midnight on the third to midnight on the sixth. Lake Street Public Access closure.
Uh so for clarity, maybe, maybe uh eleven fifty-nine out of second through. Yeah, okay, because I can see somebody, yeah, that's not midnight on the third yet.
Two, eleven fifty-nine. Will that be seven six still?
That would be the second.
Tom, you're gonna go with the sheriff's motion for that, sir?
Or we have a motion on the floor, um so.
Yeah, we'll get to that.
I will, I will second that. Does that mean we'll, it's just a.
All in favor? Closed. Moving on. Okay, uh July fourth funding. We've been uh been providing over the years eight thousand dollars for extra police patrol. And that's, as he explained, just the sheriff's office. Now, uh there was a comment uh. Uh after last Fourth of July that a lot of the time, there were four by cops hanging around Lake Street. Public access, not doing anything. So just wanted you to be aware of that.
Sometimes presence is the best deterrent.
Uh if I can, I'll give, I'll give you an example, like the TLBA, we appreciate that donation. Lead up five grand in just the fourth itself in overtime. So that that's, that's the expense, so just, just being here on the fourth because of the holiday pay, the. The rate of holiday, we ate it, we eat up, we eat up that entire five grand, so really that leaves us some new money for. Extra damage for toll. Any other day, we're in that. Okay, uh traditionally, it's been eight thousand dollars, so I would give a motion to approve that figure or something else. You happy with eight thousand?
Yeah, up to eight, up to eight thousand. If we don't end up using it, you know, because.
How much is rain or water cost us? Jetskis were seven hundred dollars for two for the weekend. I make a motion for eight thousand dollar plus. Eight hundred dollars for jet skis if they're available. Just authorized nine thousand dollars to overtime and jet skis for the sheriff's department from the Fourth of July. I'll second that. Up to nine.
So.
Does they have to be separate?
Who's making the motion?
You know, Tom said what I wanted to say, so. I just put the motion in better language, I was sad.
So it's still Greg's motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I can't second it, though.
But I can.
You can't second your own motion again. Seconded by you, Tom?
Yes.
Okay. And we changed it to up to nine thousand?
Up to.
And how is that being paid?
Uh. I believe that comes out of the general fund.
So does that mean that the sheriff's department would, will be actually doing the payment to the jet ski, for the jet ski?
No, would you thought for funding for it. Basically, it's eight, it's eight thousand dollars plus whatever the jet skis range is gonna be.
And that's different with July.
So that's in commission, eight one. Yeah, probably.
So they have a very important.
I wouldn't want to hurt the general funding. I wouldn't want to hurt the general funding word, it is not.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. It's pretty stressful for me at all.
That's why you left that job.
Okay, that'll be our good luck. All right, motion by Greg, if I can find Tom. Joy Childs?
Yes.
Albert Keys?
No.
Christine Johnson, yes. Tom Backers?
Yes.
Greg Bradley?
Yes. Thank you.
Also, I'm getting to see the faces, I don't know, yeah. So, somebody in that hand that upgraded, um, started in April, but they're what accomplished by. Um, incidents handled by the, uh, Sheriff's Office, we had a total of fifty-seven, seventeen foot high angle. I had two arrests in the Monday drive, sixteen traffic accidents and one second property. I announced notable activities, I was planning, uh, a good amount of time on hardwood road, long road and Rapid City Road. I've seen a pretty good decrease in, uh, speed violations going through town. So, I'm sure somebody may have seen me sit at the north end of the four lane here, so. Um, I've spoken with a bunch of people in Clearwater Township and they've all shown a lot of appreciation for Sheriff's Office, spend some more time up here. Just want to make you guys aware of that too. Um, as far as notable incidents. On or about April nineteenth, the Calcasas Sheriff's Office and Michigan State Police. Were dispatched to a, uh, shooting related complaint here in Rapid City. On that incident, still under investigation by the state police, so.
I do have a video, I think, of that gentleman walking across my backyard here.
Oh, do you?
Yes.
Okay. Was that?
Like six thirty in the morning.
Oh, gotcha. Did you get an MSP on that or?
No.
Okay.
No, I was in Ireland.
Oh, got it. I'll leave you my card.
Thank you.
Then, uh, in the month of April, I handled one malicious destruction of property related incident here in Rapid City Road, Mark Schneider. And at this time, no suspects, found that by the one. So. And then as far as, um, township hours, I, I later had forty-three and a half hours physically in township. Um. Then, about six and a half hours. Um, while they're at the office working on Clearwater Township related incidents, some ball investigation. Um, separate loads of stuff up on, uh, you know, the internet, even by names, phone numbers, people, things like that. Um, I had a thing to five hours working on a zoning related incident. And then, uh, about forty-five minutes, uh, last day of the week, township.
Okay, so, and all that comes out already, it's time, obviously. Okay, Greg. His paperwork included.
What, what's that?
His paperwork's been on Clearwater Township, comes off, out the hour, so he's.
So, so I, I told him to document everything and, and then we'll, we'll work on how we're doing that. I'll give it.
Yeah, this looks to me like he's fifty plus hours.
Yeah, that's ten over.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're not, okay.
Okay.
I see by your report, you're pretty much here every day. The sheriff's department's pretty much here every day, according to the hours and the different events, there's like a couple days that's missing. And I have a question, uh, the hours that you're here, are they varied or? Because I was down working in the islands and it was crazy in the morning. I did, I had asked my husband, I said, and I saw someone pull somebody over right after, motorcycles, okay, and trucks. Anyway, and seeing how close they can come to the curb when they're going through. And I, I'm sorry, but I didn't, I said there were blue lights. So that state, because there was other cars, I couldn't see. So he informed me that the blue lights are the sheriff's department, right?
Yeah, so we have a flat by bar on top of our car, that's in the sheriff's department, if you ever see that.
They were just blue lights and I, it was, there was a car ahead of you, so I couldn't tell whoever was here. But it was shortly after all of that was going on.
Yeah, it is very well.
Okay.
A lot of the hours I worked are, it's usually a day shift right now.
Okay.
I'd like to give a comment back to you at some point from that. Maybe adjust my schedule a little bit.
Yeah, because those morning, those morning hours and.
School hours when, when we got people coming in, you know, in the morning or picking up kids in the afternoon about three o'clock, uh. Keeping the speakers down here. And the other thing is, uh, everybody flies down, uh, Crystal Beach Road. And Hollywood, so. Maybe we'll get them to slow down. We do have some. You have four flashing. Radar speed signs, they're, they're already here, they're being worked out. Uh, two on Rapid City Road and the other two, I kind of left it up to Andrew, I think, Crystal Beach, by the crosswalk area.
Joanne, you had some issues on Saturday. We're driving to.
They have what? Some driving issues. Saturday, on Saturday.
When I was working, you mean? What, I, what are you talking?
I got a tax review on Saturday, I was a kid, so.
So, oh, I, I did, no, that was something different, let me see.
So while Joanne's looking that up, I will also make the board aware, the public aware, so our school resource officer's been able to get more time in the schools up here. There was kind of a, I, I don't want to, and there was, there was a, I'll call it a misunderstanding of what his intent was up here. And, and it was just, it, it took some work to get in up here and get, get integrated into the school. So he's been doing good about coming up and doing, um, lunch with the cop. And, uh, doing those and spending more time up in, in Rapid City. Obviously, as you can imagine, the high school, middle school take a lot of our time, so he has to make it a, a direct point to get to the elementary schools and.
Right.
Cities, so.
He's been down, or here on the tourism station, so.
Yeah.
Saturday was just, I texted him, there's lots of speeding and Rick was driving downtown, that was in the morn. Well, that actually was one thirty in the afternoon and, um. Then one fifty, lots of speeding, they were, they were just going crazy that day.
Just want to make a, a point in most radar segments that are equipped to record the kind. Our just final speeding is going on in that.
Basically, it's, um, it's a traffic cone. So. This might help the road commission, if you all want. It'll be a lot of busy time. We'll figure that out.
I appreciate that and if we can help with any grants, because I know if we get it, uh, the Decatur units, I'm not sure what time you're looking at. Actually, I have a module that you can do that will do the traffic and will, it'll give us, uh, a way to data mine that. We're actually trying to look at a new speed trailer. The one we have was born before I was, I think, so, um. We're trying to get a, a speed trailer that can do more of that, give us some traffic study information.
I think originally we pursued trying to get a grant through AAA. For a couple of mobile speed signs, uh, that, you know, on the wheels, you just toll and put them wherever you want. Uh, but yeah, a couple more signs wouldn't hurt, so if you, uh. Have a, uh, an avenue for a grant, that would be, I, we would be interested in.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to reach out to the National Highway Traffic Safety Association. They, they've given us some grants for some other things. Because that, the big unit that has, you know, that would pull around behind one of the cars is. I mean, the, the cheapest one I found was like sixteen thousand dollars and, uh, so I am gonna try to get that that would. Like on the Fourth of July, we could set up and do a lot of accounts versus having a John Rutter, of course.
And if I'm not mistaken, Jim, these signs that we do have are fixed. They're gonna go on wooden poles, just for existing poles, okay? They have a universal mounting bracket. So we could, we could move them around, but it's a, it's a process.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, uh, anything else for the sheriff in terms of, Dickie?
Yeah, I just have, uh, one question. Um, I know you, you said something about that ten hours. Overtime, how did we write that in the contract for that being approved? Does that, isn't that supposed to be board approval if it's over forty hours?
Yeah, that's, that's why.
Why, there's no charge for that, we're not, okay, so those ten hours are.
And I wanted Brian to get up here to meet with everybody and, and really get a lay of the land, so. Yeah, we're, we're not gonna, if it comes to overtime, we're, we're gonna do the process, but. Yeah, this month was.
That is a paid overtime hours, one that, and, and he would bring that up. Uh, basically, Fourth of July weekend, we got covered. Okay, but you said the twenty-ninth, uh, you wanted to send somebody up here, uh, the weekend before.
Yeah, that, that's, that's, that's just part of, part of what I was gonna say.
Oh, okay, all right. Thank you for that.
Yeah, it's good, break in or updates there for us.
Oh, yes, I did, I don't have much, but I know that Sergeant Griffin worked on it and I think. I'm not sure which board members he reached out to, I know he was trying to hook Joe and, and, uh, but he's done some interviews on that. He is, he was off today when, when, uh, Joe emailed me, so I was, I was going to, uh, get him and have him reach out Monday and give an update to you, so.
Thank you.
So it's still being worked there. Yeah, he, I, it may be at the prosecutor's office, I know we wrapped up some interviews with it. Um, we had, we had an opportunity to interview, uh, a suspect. And, uh, um, I think he put it to the prosecutor's office, but I, I will let him verify that.
This is on the B and A, so. All right, yeah, we need to get that going, so. So we get an insurance company. Okay, uh, anything else? Fire Department.
We have your fire department report, thank you. Uh, Derek did text me earlier and say he wasn't able to make it to the meeting, um. And he had not at that point written a report, so Greg got that out for us. Um. He did want us to know that ladder testing was completed and that the firehouse was sprayed for bugs. And. Because everybody needs to know that.
You know, I always question one of the little big blocks where the brown. Oh, you mean for the mice? Yeah, they, yeah, no. Well, I'm gonna go, ready after the snow come off around. And tracks everywhere. I had like thirteen dead mice.
Oh. Nice, I'm glad to hear that.
That was at the Fairburn? That was at the Fairburn?
Yeah.
Get a cat?
Out there all over the place, I didn't grab them.
Instead of one of those dalmatians, you get a cat.
Um, under the fire department, I do need to, uh, we didn't get a response from D whether Alden Bank, uh.
Oh.
Approved her.
The account.
We got, they got it there.
Her demand that they change it because of the resolution already being written, but I hadn't heard anything, so I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion. That we approve the changing of the name. Fire Equipment to Fire Department. For the Alden Bank account. We are out of checks completely now. I wrote the last seven to pay bills yesterday, so the new checks have already been ordered and they're in the file waiting to go.
Oh, okay, I was just saying, you should have gotten them, because I got the bill.
Okay, Fire Department.
Fire Department.
That will still be separated in her accounts.
Okay, so.
And the reason it was fire equipment was because we ran out of fire fund checks. When we combined the accounts and fire equipment had tons of checks, because we don't ever write any checks out of that fund or didn't. And then we combined it and started using those checks. Now we're out of those checks and we need to change it because it's not the fire equipment. Account, it's both.
I'll make it easier for everyone.
Yes. And did you second that, Dylan?
I will.
Oh. And does that need a roll call vote? Yes. So roll call vote on that, Tom Backers?
Yes.
Greg Bradley?
Yes.
Joy Childs?
Yes.
Albert Keys?
Yes.
Christine Johnson, yes. Thank you so much.
Okay, Greg, you got anything? Fire, uh. The last day of this month, we have a insurance inspector. By his own inspection, he come for a visit. Okay, and then on June first, we have a. A training class that runs all day long, being paid for by the state, so you'll be looking for other C month data.
And you're gonna send me a notice of that?
Yeah, you're gonna send me a form?
I'll figure out for him.
Yeah, I saw that email too. Okay, uh, planning commission?
Do you remember, you have papers?
Yeah, I do, this one, yeah.
Okay, planning commission report five, six, and twenty-four. Planning commission would like to thank Tina Fields for her twenty-two years of township service. Her dedication, knowledge, leadership to enforce township has had a positive impact on township and the citizens that we serve. Her decisions along with all commission members throughout the years will stay with us to the future. The presence of the planning commission will be missed. Uh, number two, and she did, we had a lot of people there, but she was appreciative of the sake of her service, so.
Yeah.
Number two, looking, uh, looking forward, planning commission went over a few ideas for the ma- on the master plan. And are looking at holding a couple workshops on the subject. No dates have been set at this time. Uh, number three. One thing that was brought up was alleyways. Planning commission is recommending that the township board and committee. Look at addressing the issue. You know, this was brought up in the past, but it might be something the board considers as starting a committee, uh.
Well, in the past, you know, the board threw everything that they wanted to do. But, you know, the board said that the landlords have to put a bill for that, not the county. And that were died that all the time. Basically, what we were doing was offering, uh, the, uh, joining parcels. Okay, fifty percent of the alleyway that crossed or ran through their, their parcel. And, uh, I know, um, Sirry Spanx was interested in, uh. Basically, the alleyway that runs behind their property all the way to, uh, the BP station and, uh, beyond. And the church wasn't. So I got those responses as far as, uh, the one by the firehouse. Uh, that there's a septic field in evidently, uh, I got no response from them, so, uh, that kind of died in the water. We also have the one, uh, that runs between the gym and, uh, the front street, runs behind the post office. And, uh, I was looking at that township owns a property, if we were going to basically. Expand that garage with a second bay on it, new roof on it. Okay, we would have to retain that property to basically. Uh, meet the setback requirement, okay? But, yeah, it's a convoluted mess. Uh, the, uh, the decision to vacate was made in nineteen seventy-one, so it's fifty-three years old. And still, uh. So, if the planning commission wants to round out the committee. And suggest some names. Uh, basically, what this has been run into is.
I don't think it's the planning commission's, uh, job to round out the committee. I think it's just board to try to round it in committee.
Okay, would you, uh, you'd like to, uh, run, head that up?
No.
Neither do I. I have enough on that set. Okay. So. Well, I, if I remember right, it was the, the legal bill to get all that straightened out the plant. Sixty to ninety thousand dollar, it's basically, you have to do a plat revision.
Yeah.
A plat revision of minimums ten grand. And you're talking about, uh, basically one plat here. Uh, which takes all the downtown area. Okay, but that cost has to be shared by the people that are interested in the alley. So, it's. It's gonna take some time. So as far as, as, as far as I'm concerned, it's waited fifty-three years, it's gonna wait till we're mentioned for.
I knew that was coming.
Because I tried, I tried to get this done when I was on the planning commission. Okay, and I did have a lot of the research, I have the information available. Uh, I will gladly print it over to somebody that wants to take charge of that project. Nobody, it's not going to be.
Yeah, the next supervisor.
Yeah, it all comes down, and, you know, I mean, you, basically, uh, a friendly lawsuit, it's a claim deed. And you have them pay for the survey, have them pay for that portion of, uh, plat revision. But you have to have everybody on board to revise the plat once instead of in.
That's gonna take some time.
Yes. I think the school has a couple families on their property. Yes. I think the school has a couple of counties on their property. Yes. Uh, there are streets here that don't go up on any of the maps. If you look at the plaque, Ayr runs from, uh, basically the BP station to Freedom Park West. Okay, it's not on any street in that hill bar.
I know. People think it's a street from here to the church.
Well, there's, yeah, there's another way right here.
There's a, a septic system, I understand, and one of the houses down there that's, um, blind, so.
Anyway, okay, moving on.
Anything else?
Yeah. After part.
Okay, uh, I would, I would like to Tina Fields deserves some recognition at some point. Uh, she is a glue that held the planning together for a long time and, uh, as far as I can store and, uh, her memory is amazing as far as, you know, marshals who owned that and this town shift and they was weekly under it. Uh, so I think, uh, like certificate of appreciation of plaque at a minimum uh, might be in order. This language actually at the top of your report, you know, is, is fine.
I don't think we can expend funds for, for that kind of thing.
What's that?
I think for recognition, we can.
Can we?
Well, just, I just want you to keep in mind that we've also had other employees of seventeen years. You know, if we're gonna do one, we need to keep it equal.
Yeah.
I agree.
I don't think, uh, I don't think we can let, uh, Tina's services, townsfolk go unobserved.
We can, uh, take donations and buy her flowers and then.
We can do that. Planning commission and us and whoever.
You could do that.
Take a list of why.
Pass the hat.
Yeah. Bring donations.
There'll be more anyway.
And I'll let Angie know.
Okay.
We're taking the collections tonight.
Can we put that, I don't know. Can we, how can we bring that to the community? Put that on the course, I don't know.
Uh, thank you, Timber, or?
Is there any more?
No, we could put something in the paper, but.
That would be a, that would be a good idea, report. In the paper.
Citizen Jim. And then.
Are we allowed to have an event? Okay.
No. Well, I don't know. That's something we have to walk into. Okay, number four.
Uh, when you permit partial four zero dash zero zero dash zero two one dash zero zero six dash two one for its lake storage units. Uh, sixty-nine fifteen Rapid City Road Northwest. There are already, uh, there are already units on site. One extra unit will be made. And two units will be connected. Uh, this is already, it's already, uh, permitted use. So that, that is being done. And five, the planning commission will plan on looking at the cemetery ordinance at our next meeting. And we'd like to invite Craig, the township maintenance, to attend to get his perspective on possible changes and where he are. So I don't have Craig's number, but if somebody can reach out to him and see if he's interested in joining that meeting next month.
Okay, uh, Craig gets paid for the meetings. Yes.
And number six, I already got the answer to that from our office.
Sexton P.
There, there's, there's one that, at the Sexton, and then there's, there was another person, uh, who we was supposed to.
Pete's the only one I know of.
She gave me two names. Yeah, I, I'll forward that to everybody who knows. Number seven, the planning commission will always be looking at ready for articles. Uh, thirteen R one, thirteen dash zero two, point zero two, letter F in article fourteen R two, fourteen point zero two, letter F, permitted uses. Keeping of domestic pets, livestock, and poultry for personal, non-commercial use, provided that the same are maintained and housed so as not to be a public nuisance. Uh, I put out a suggestion and, uh, the planning commission will, like or not, the one for Donald, suggestion was to add that domestic pets, livestock, and poultry be restricted to the home property unless leased and under control of the owner slash caretaker. This was just a suggestion. No action was taken. Uh, where this came from, we had a complaint, uh, somebody's animals, domestic pets were, were going on his land and there was really nothing, uh, in our ordinance to address it. So it couldn't be addressed. So this is something we're just gonna look at and see if we can tighten up that ordinance a little bit. And that's all I have.
And in our one zone property that's, that needs to be drafted, we need to be fenced or, into rep control. Okay. Uh, I also had a request from, uh, Janine Pesosa uh, to find out if you would be interested in remaining on the planning commission after your, and your, as trustee expires.
Yeah, so I did talk to Janine about that and I told her I would think about that. So I will get back on the.
Right now, we have a full complement over there. Are we short?
Move short on you.
Okay, uh, the only advocate that we had for that position was Ryan Williams. And as of the last meeting, he was still interested in the position. So, uh, I would nominate, uh, Ryan Williams to fill the vacancy on the planning commission.
I'll second that one.
He can do it when he's not here. I'll call him up tomorrow and say, guess what? That's what you get from that show.
It's interesting. He knows a few people that are soon to want to get involved in our township. I think that's good.
Okay, we get a second.
Oh, yes, Joanne is your second.
Okay.
Is that a roll call?
That's a roll call. We're making our own point.
Okay. Motion by Tom to nominate Ryan Williams to fill the vacancy on the planning commission, second by Joanne. Uh, roll call vote, Christine Johnson, yes. Albert Keys?
Yes.
Joan Childs?
Yes.
Greg Bradley?
Yes.
Tom Backers?
Yes.
Motion for it.
And Ryan will have to be sworn in.
And who will be notifying him?
Yes, I was on the.
Um, as far as the cemetery ordinance goes, uh, Angie, Margaret, and myself just did an MTA cemetery training. And, uh, there were lots of things that we learned in that training. And we have the recording, so we can go over it again. And I could actually share that with the planning commission if they'd like to have a copy of that as well. Um, and I think Angie wrote out some suggestions. And I, I think her and Craig are also together looking at what can we do differently.
Well, since I missed that, can you send that to me? Because I want to be on the committee one of.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it'd be pretty easy to show that to them. I mentioned a button we could hit, so we can all have that.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Zoning report. Uh, I could get a report from Panama. Yeah, so you should have that there. As you can tell, it's pretty busy. Been some time of year for complaints and I'm getting out. I'm, uh, I'm getting my feet dirty out there and going to talk to a bunch of people. I want to thank the public bill as well for the people that did utilize our cleanup day. I would roughly say ninety percent of the people that I talked to of some, that had some issue in the township utilized it. That's pretty good. Uh, I don't know if you have noticed a little bit of changes, but there are a little bit of changes. Couple problems that were kind of self-correcting and what I mean by that, that people moved, the owners cleaned up. closure and, and kind of. Most work, uh, household stuff inside the office got that kind of set up now, so it looks like an office. Computers up and running, have the new phone system going, so getting a lot of input from the public here. Doing my best.
Who sent the printer out?
Uh, I, I talked to Joanne. She could just go on and clean it. That's all it was. It's not up there for service.
I, I took it into, um, cartridge world, because I was taking my, my printer in myself and, um, he's.
More for ink cartridges in there?
Yeah, and he says if it's not used regularly, they get hard.
Yeah, I know.
And so he, he showed me on mine how to take care of that.
I, I will, I will tell you this, yeah. I wouldn't care if it doesn't get corrected by cleaning it. I wouldn't care.
It was bought in twenty-two.
Like you said, though, those ink cartridges are ridiculous. If we are looking at a new printer, get at least, uh, the tank system.
Well, if it, if it works, I mean, you're, you're pretty much set up in, in the office with everything you need, including scanner. Scanner works out too. So I, I just have to have a system set up, uh, so that, uh, everybody has a library. There, there was an error mess that came to, but maybe just a while, I'd say.
I'll stop back this week, see, see what he says. And I, are you done?
Yes.
I'm asked to, if it's possible, I mentioned to Craig first, we've got two trucks. If John can use one of those trucks. And Craig says, no problem.
That's on my list.
Oh, is it?
Content vehicle versus magnetic, uh, uh, sides panels on a, for your personal. If we get the magnetic panels for Co-Image, basically, uh, that's, you know, not a big deal. Uh, and if you wanted to use your personal vehicle for someone just running around. But if you needed a township truck, the more, but more efficient.
Derek, absolutely. There's definitely time everybody to have the township truck. Who are you driving? Okay, so basically, what, what I'm gonna tell you is, uh, we'll get a whole, whole.
We'll get a whole throw in. She didn't get the, the, the magnetic panel from Lizzie yet.
She, she has one. The big one that belongs.
Yeah, she ought to have one. So we'll order two more. And I think Pro-Image did the first one, so, and they shouldn't be over a thousand dollars.
Are you talking about for his vehicle?
For his vehicle, his personal vehicle.
Well, aren't we telling you, you prefer to use the township vehicle?
Well, there, there's a time and a place. Like I said, the majority of towns that do this, I want to be in the township truck. But there's also a time where.
Oh, okay.
You can use.
I can see where you're just gonna leave the house, go see somebody for a half hour, so you use your own, and gonna spend the day doing what you want to truck.
Right, so I never gave you the ring. I mean, Craig, I didn't even, when Craig, that would be availability of which truck, so.
Yeah, he, right now Craig says he'll just use the old one.
Investing in the magnetic panels, okay.
No big deal. That'd be, it's not a big deal and, uh, we'll get all the Pro-Images.
Just get those. Oh, you ought to have a body cam. Oh, I got the body cam. I have, I got it plugged in. I haven't downloaded to see what it does and doesn't do. But I have actually cleaned the old thing.
That was three.
Okay, you got a question?
Yes, I, uh, as far as the training goes, how, how was that one? Are you utilizing that? Are you learning or?
Yes, uh, I will say, I don't think they spend as much time as they should with me. And I'm not being negative. I just, I know we've got a schedule, but I'm, we're also contracted with them. And I have, I'm, so we're gonna get a little bit more hands on, or on the job training.
Well, good. Uh, because we're, let the board know if it's not working out, we're enjoying it.
Yeah, because that's month to month there.
Maybe, but overall, we want you, we want you to work with, but if it's not working.
Absolutely. There's a lot of knowledge here, so I need to pay with your brains.
Did you go to the MTA conference and?
No.
You know, we missed that one.
Did you, have you, uh, we have an MTA membership, so. Right, and there's a lot of online stuff. I just talked to Angie a lot. I got the, the website. And there's a couple of things that I am interested in going to.
Okay.
But just to make it clear, there was a little misunderstanding. He is the ordinance enforcement officer, and that's what he's trying to learn right now is all the ordinance and stuff. So the zoning stuff still needs to go to Marv.
Well, Marv, you need.
Oh, yeah. I suggest, because Angie was getting a little confused. I said.
No, I think he's hired a zone.
He's a zoning administrator.
Yeah.
He will be the zone.
Well, he will be, but to overload him with all of that right now, that's really hard.
He is about working with them.
Oh, yeah, he is, yeah. But he's not in charge, because that's our biggest, like, that's our biggest liability, really.
Anything else?
Yes, sir. Our maintenance people have shirts that identify them. A lot of township people, and I wondered if that's what we should worry about.
Yeah, magnetic signs in the shirt.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
You want a uniform?
My one is one of the one.
Yeah. Okay, uh, anything else? Okay, it's only our office administrator report, kind of thing. Cemetery and other that. Okay, suggestion to increase the cost of our cemetery plots.
What's happening is a lot of people, what I've heard, are, because it's inexpensive here, they're coming up from downstate burying their people. And that's why some of this needs to be changed. We need to make sure there's some kind of connection.
Well, here's the other, the other side of that coin.
I haven't read this.
Okay, we need the bat five from this building, bat. Okay, survey and mark. In other words, there's five acres there we're not using.
Yeah, when we purchase it, we should already have that.
No, it's not marked. It's all forest.
No, but there should be, when they survey, they put metal pins in.
Okay, that's something we'll have to check.
On the corners or wherever, so we don't.
We should probably increase the cost of the plot.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure that's, this is probably from the seventies. And what Angie suggested would be four hundred dollars a plot, which would mean a four-plot grave site would be sixteen hundred bucks. Sixty to twelve hundred, sixty, I'm sure, right?
Four hundred times, yeah, she had twelve hundred here, but.
You think that's that?
Really high. If it was four hundred dollars a grave site and a plot of four, it would be sixteen hundred.
And we're caring for it the rest of eternity.
Yeah, that wants maintenance for life, you know, for life.
Because we can't charge them that either.
Now.
Or that's four, that's four plots.
And that would require an amendment to the ordinance. Okay. So.
Hundred dollars?
That's really low.
That won't even cover the Sexton digging it.
Basically, if we approve the price increase here, then, uh, the amendment would be, uh, written by the planning commission to include price increase.
Or shouldn't we be, there's a lot of stuff in, heard, maybe lost here and.
But do we, do we want to authorize, uh, approve a price increase now or? Because that is technically an amendment to the existing ordinance. Before we overhaul the cemetery ordinance, you were saying, we're gonna have to have a public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay, we completely rewrite that one. But the issue right now is we're not charging enough for cemetery plots. So if we're gonna change the price, I would like to do it now so that, uh, office staff and clerk are aware. So I need a motion.
Okay, sure. But in the ordinance, it doesn't say a price, does it? I, I read the ordinance, but I can't remember.
I've got it here somewhere, but I would have to rattle through and find the damn thing. Cemetery ordinance.
That was long ago.
Does that, uh, you can't be entitled to that if you smile.
You can't clean title for that, these are artificial. Purchase price and transfer fee. Township board by resolution may periodically set an adjust bill, fees for burial services.
By resolution?
Right, by resolution.
Okay, so we need to do a resolution.
Okay, so you have to write a resolution on the increase.
Actually, we published in section four. Of ordinance twenty five.
As far as cleanup day goes, I actually asked um Angie and Margaret to do a write-up of. Issues that they saw or had to deal with, because there was a lot of. Different people working on different parts of it and not communicating, so Angie would answer a question for somebody that's calling and asking. And then she'd find out from somebody else, oh, somebody changed that, it's not like that now. And that was happening right up until the day, and I know I was not that involved in it, but I wanted them to look at it. And give us an idea of how we can improve that, and that's gonna be for next year, and I know that's already off your plate. So you don't even have to think about it.
Yes, we could have used two more volunteers just to separate uh scrap metal.
Yeah.
Because that all got dumped in the same dumpster, and we need to have more money of it that would separate.
And even Marg- Margaret said flow of traffic was an issue, there was nobody there to say, go here, go there. Um, so people were driving in and it, it just started, she, she took the place. And she started to direct people where to go first, so if they had scrap to unload, they could go over there and then go here and then go out.
I would like to make a suggestion. Um, I think we need to look again at roadside pickup by GFL, like by millage, and so if we do that. We can get it on the, one of the two ballots coming up, and I've talked to people, and uh Mr. Rogers talked. Like in forty dollars a year to pick up, then we won't have to worry about this and all this excess. And they have, I thought there was only GFL, but I guess there are three other. Large garbage pickups, and so, and what they go by is Bing. I think we really need to look at that and get on, get it on the ballot either August or November. Then we don't have to worry about cleanup day, we don't have to worry about.
GFL, uh basically do, give me a ballpark price of what it would cost. Okay, because they had previous, the, the year previous to that, done curbside pickup. Okay, so that should have been.
You're talking weekly though.
I'm talking about weekly pickup.
I, yes, I understand that, but they knew how many stops, how many locations they stopped at. So just give me a ballpark of what it would cost per. Annual, to do this on a weekly basis, never got back to me.
Well, there's two other companies.
If you wanna pursue that.
I've tried calling before too, and they didn't get back to me, but no, I said, there's two other companies, why not do it?
Yeah, try the other two and.
John Rogers here, John.
Yeah, Rapid Riverhead, township player. Yeah, we have a weekly curbside cleaning, and one of the things, as I was explaining, is Charles. Um, who, from a road perspective, if you have three other companies. And that are servicing your township, and you don't have the, 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 the weekly curbside. You might have three different garage trucks driving down the same road three times a week. But if you consolidate that into a one-stop shop, one company that you hold out chip, they go down your one road once a week and never come back. In addition to that, curbside cleanup, or curbside um pickup, weekly pickup. I don't know, I don't know what people are paying um per month, even um if you have the.
Ninety bucks, ninety bucks a month, well, actually, it's a quarter.
Ninety bucks a month, how much more?
A quarter.
Or ninety dollars a quarter, I'm paying about forty dollars a year in my taxes.
Something else he's, he mentioned the other day, and I'm thinking, this is really interesting, have you ever put stuff out by the road and watched it disappear? And that, so that, that.
And it ends up in a certain place on valley road.
Well, yeah, some of it, but. I, I've tried before, but I'll try again, how's that sound?
That's a great idea, I think we should let the people decide.
Yeah. Cause we, we've spent a lot of money on picking up people's trash.
You have to come up with some figures.
I, yeah, I understand.
To ask for.
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll go by, it was suggested it goes by electrical outlets. We have to find out how many, because there's a lot of vacant, you can't go by land, because there's a lot of vacant, but if there's a, an electric.
I think we're gonna start here. I don't think there was any thing that we could take action on right now, it was just a.
That's FYI.
Yeah, FYI on cemetery stuff, they have their stuff.
Can a lot of this kind of be discussed in a committee and then brought to the board?
Yes, I think. Uh, who's got, if somebody wants to bury some ashes under a tree. Uh, that one of our.
I think that's an open, but can we?
I think that's on the perks.
Yeah, is it parks?
Well, I think.
I mean, it sounds like a good idea, but we allow one, they want it on Torch Lake, so we plant a tree on Torch Lake, they got someone's ashes and then. Who's gonna wanna do it next, everybody's gonna do it. We are renovating our parks, you know, I don't know, that, that sound like.
Anyway, okay, anybody have any other? Anything else under office administration? Maintenance. Uh, the Jim Florist brother, I don't know, the three of us were at the demonstration. To me, uh, that Florist brother. Is basically an electric motor pump and a wet glass. And for seven grand, I think uh we might wanna look at alternatives. And a cheap one, an eighteen inch, was five thousand. Uh, just, and it's not something that's pressing, Craig's, you know, takes him a couple hours to sweep and mop that gym floor when it needs it.
And that's only one company, are there others?
I don't know, I can uh, I can have the deputy supervisor hop on. And do a search. And see if we can come up with some alternatives. I mean, appreciate the guy coming out here and.
Yeah.
And uh doing the demonstration, but uh. Machine wasn't present, but it wasn't seven grand present. Basically.
Yeah. We're gonna look for more bids, different companies. And then there's also the email that you got about refinishing the.
Yeah, that would be something that would be done over the Christmas holiday, you know. So that would be, and that, or I just sent that as information.
Okay.
Okay, they re-cold the gym floor uh once a year for three years. And uh basically, that keeps the warranty intact. Right? And I have no idea on the price for it would cost, and he isn't either, probably.
Um, what's the price?
Two thousand one hundred.
Yeah, it's like two American dollars.
Yeah, we sure did two thousand on the letter, I think you said, it's, it's that on a refinish and like.
Yeah.
Yeah, it must be, I, I heard about, but there was no.
We start, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, if the board is okay with it, I'd like to jump to the roads committee, I believe that's why John is here. So if we can, you can take me here. It's okay with the board?
Mr. Rogers?
Well, I can, I can certainly let Jim start, I'm here more or less for Jim uh and what he wants, and answer any questions that we may have. Because I'm sure it'll be easier if I'm sitting here, if there's any ambiguities in what went on yesterday at our board meeting. Um, so I'll, I'll go ahead and let Jim start and support him, that's my opinion, yeah, excuse my appearance, cause I was mowing the lawn. When I decided to come over here, I was in Rapid City mowing, and I got done with time, say more. There hasn't been a road committee yet. Yeah, first was when there was, or that question, just like that, even though it seems like it should have, but it was a local mission meeting yesterday. Let's get ahead here a little bit, see my thing, and then I'll finish up with under, because that's where all the discussions can be. Uh, central arrow sign is up at the end of Main Street, like around Lake Road intersection.
Nice.
Uh, speed warning signs have been delivered, they've been assembled. They're gonna be mounting them on wood posts, I expect the arrival soon, and uh. Andrew's, I think, experimenting a little bit with the um. Traffic reporting software and stuff like that, so fitting that all organized for us, and. Again, we're gonna share that with Sheriff and see if we can slow people down a little bit. Uh, there is not yet a price for the coils road overlay, but I did remind them again that we're. Still looking to get a price on what we asked for there. I don't know, all I can tell you is that it's not, not been done yet, but John maybe has an answer.
What, what's the price to do the overcoat on?
Yeah, I'm working on it.
You're working on it? When do you think you're gonna answer?
I can't guarantee it, I'm, I'm gonna be working out, I got meetings all next week. Hopefully before your mansion. It also reminded again on the River Street, the Center Street flooding that we were talking about. You mentioned something, and I just had an idea of what we're talking about, the alleyway behind the post files there. You know, if we could connect Center Street and River Street, we would only have to make one drain to Rapid City Road. Which may or may not cost more to run pipe down into alley. Um, we, we're gonna have to do something there with that flooding, it's just continuing to get worse, um. I know, I've talked to John about it a couple times, he mentioned snapped and stone, and would at least allow for. Um, to displace where some of that water is, and then every time somebody drives on it, it won't take the dirt away with it and create the hole over and over. Kind of the thing, so I think you get quick picks. By the post office, when they did the repave, they channeled, cause the water used to sit post office parking. And then you did that repave, and you'd see the feet they put in to channelize that ditch, but the ditch's never, you know, they never completed it into the ditch. If there's a wall, so that ditch, this one, that's good.
It goes clear up to the, the public parking, the other day after that rain, and I walked through it, and it's about that, I had boots on, so I went about that.
Seen it as deep as about eight or ten inches.
Yeah, and this one here, and on the River Street.
That was a mystery, I mean, that's.
That, that is a mess for those people to have to deal with all the time.
The only, the only way to fix that is underground bridge, really.
Is that possible?
Anything's possible, over a dollar.
We got this connected into the, the Rapid City Road grade.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause you can't lift it up the hill.
Yeah, it's gotta go down.
I think a lot of that water comes directly from our parking lot, on the side of the hall too, because it doesn't go into the ground there.
Can we put some gravel in there, just for?
That would, that would help.
Yeah.
And like I told Jim, and Jim mentioned, apple stone might be the best, because if you put a, a clay-based gravel in there, the clay is gonna.
I use apple stone in my driveway, it's like concrete after a while.
Zimmerman Road financing, I have two conversations first.
Before you on that, we jump back to Oil's Ride. Right now, I mean, it, it needs some patching, you know, temporary patching, because there's some deep holes. Yeah, I mean, it, it, and it's hard to see, and you see people going down there like it's uh, you know, trying to dodge.
They just finished, they just finished, I don't know, they went through it, sprayed it to the shoulders, so people could drive on a smooth surface and did some patching in there.
So. But it's really imperative, we do something real quick, and also, if it was open, the weather's nice now, we should be doing the overlay.
Overlay is what it costs, I mean, I think it's gonna last not as long.
What do you think, it's, it's a winning the bank here.
They, they said, what did you say, you'd be glad if it lasts five to seven years?
Yeah, I think it'll last twenty, based on experience, based on a little half inch overlay.
Lasted, it lasted sixty-five years.
Yeah.
Yeah, basically. All right, Zimmerman Road financing, I've made a couple phone calls, um, I contacted Marvin, he gave me a name of a couple of. Municipal bond lawyers, and I talked to him just about requirements of what, like we needed to do something like that, and. To actually issue, the township to issue bonds, it's kind of a complicated thing, it'll take us quite a while to do it. It's a little more costly to do the workup for all that, but there is a, this installment loan process. As well, that, that same lawyer can write up, and. I was told that if we wanted to, with our current mileage in place now, we could literally have the money to do Zimmerman Road in weeks if we wanted it. So. You know, we are ready or whatever, and. You know, that's not my decision to make, but when you guys are ready to do that, uh, funding isn't gonna be a problem for Zimmerman Road.
Well, if, if you're gonna do that, then uh. Uh, overlay, overlaying the oils would be pretty much a waste of time, because why not ask for both of them?
Well, then if you wanna do that, but you have to pay back more than, we already kind of agreed on, you know, that we have the money sitting there right now to do the oils.
Yeah, we've been putting that off for like ten years.
I know that, I, I know that. But what I'm saying, the implications of basically taking out a loan to do Zimmerman Road. And do it correctly, why not ask for the money to do both of them, and do them both?
Right.
And fix them.
Would it be eighty to twenty split on Zimmerman, we're looking at about five fifty somewhere in that neighborhood with the current price. So if you did do the bells and whistles, whistles program, which we already have the engineering study done and everything for on there. And blended those together, you could probably, you know, borrow a million, right, whatever you need to, and so.
And would that be an?
And then the loan payment would come out of the road, Melis.
Yeah, the, the way he. Described it to me is that you make two interest payments a year and one principal payment a year on those loans, the suburbs set up. So, anyway, that.
And he would help us do all that.
Basically, just send the information, and, and it would be something to look at regardless.
Yeah, I would love to see that.
If he having problems getting materials, which is what I gathered from, was it your email or your text?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, there's a, seems to be some kind of, I don't know if it's lack of materials or manpower or whatever, but they're not guaranteeing. The township until uh possibly the twenty twenty-five season, is that correct? Near June, June of twenty twenty-five?
The township would be.
That's theirs, but I'm just saying there's still.
I'm talking about asphalt, yeah, so.
Oh, so the Rapid City Road is not gonna get done?
Um, the, the, we had to agree in order to award the bid, you do it through, through the mid-June of twenty twenty-five completion date, because they're so busy. And the rain keeps pushing them back and back and back, and so, right, which is to the advantage, right? Uh, I think for Rapid City Road in particular, because then it'll have time for it to lay out, if you guys wanna change it to, it's pretty nice. And if, after the chip seal, it'll cover up the existing paper markings, so we won't have the additional cost of, of removing the, if it's the vapor markings.
Yeah, sure.
If we do it right after the chip seal. Just in asphalt, oils would be a hundred thousand dollars. Just in asphalt, then you have the shoulders that you have to bring out. I, that's the part I, I gotta figure out, what kind of material you want on the shoulders.
Yeah, let's just get it done, we have the money.
Yeah, you're probably, and, and, you know, you're probably close to that in, in gravel too, yeah, if not. You're probably close to that and, and gravel too, yeah, if not, um. So you're probably looking at 150, 175,000 for, for a two inch overlay, 80% of that.
You have the money, right?
We're gonna be getting the money.
That's for, that's for the overlaying shoulders.
Yeah, I'll guarantee it for five minutes.
Well, I know that.
No, well, I don't know the exact price for the shoulders. I'm, I'm, I'm estimating a hundred dollars a ton, but the problem you have with oils dry. And I'm not saying you, you're gonna probably pay more in asphalt because the big trucks can go down there and turn around. They have to shuttle the asphalt and break the big red rivers that all 50 tons.
Okay, I'm, I'm thinking about calling a sack at the end of that.
Yeah, they'll tear that to pieces. So that, in a case like that, they'll have to shuttle it in with smaller trucks.
Okay, and then the other question would be that doesn't include clearing the drainage ditches.
Culverts. Depends on what you want to do. Yeah, that's fine. And a hundred thousand is just in asphalt if it's a hundred dollars a ton. Any, every dollar over a hundred dollars a ton bid price, it'll be that much more.
Yeah, I understand that. So, but, uh, the Zimmerman installment loan thing would be beneficial for us to look at. Okay, and.
Yeah, we put both of those together, I mean.
So, and, and if we, if we did this together, we can get, actually get them done. At the same time or the same summer, all right, uh, then. Basically, we're talking.
Get it in the works anyway.
Yeah, till we get that one dollar, let's, let's just get.
On an overlay that may only be there for a year.
Maybe, one of, and I, I know that you're saying, well, let's just get it done. I don't recommend bidding it out this year. I recommend bidding it out in, in January, February, March of next year.
Then it would be done next summer.
You've been it out right now and, and, uh, most of your contractors are all lined up for their work. So I don't, so they're gonna elevate their prices on their price per ton for asphalt, um, because they don't really want more at this point. And, um. If you bid it out in the winter time, then they're hungry to line their work out and they're gonna expect to, you got better price for asphalt. And remember, I mean, you're talking a thousand tons of asphalt. So every, every dollar there, your, your, your cost per ton goes up, it's gonna, you know, add a thousand dollars to that project. Here's another thing too, and I don't know on the installment loan, we have to accept all of the funds upfront. But what if we were to go with that original 512,000 dollar bid that we got? I mean, we already have that. That's assaged.
From here on, yeah.
Yes, that's a billable package.
For oils?
Yes.
I think that's a mistake. You start tearing up that road, it's gonna, there's no bottom to it.
That's why the new asphalt will never hold.
It will. It's, it's, that base has been there for 65 years.
The base is moving.
Yeah, sure, but the asphalt.
I'm telling you what my 28 years of experience in paving road has taught me. And you're, what I'm, I'm explaining to you, I would only give a five minute warranty on that road. You can go ahead and spend $200,000 to put a fix on that might not last more than five minutes because you think it will, but I don't recommend it.
Something like, if you come over and I'll show you where there's been overlays done, you know, where excess material has been dumped on there. It's a half inch thick, okay, and it's been there for 10 years. It holds that, all that previous asphalt in place. And it's been there and it's smooth and you can roller scale it.
Just give me the green line.
What would, what would, um, it cost us to clear the drainage system of it?
The what?
The culverts. Ditches, the culverts.
I don't know. You have, you have more, the culverts. The culverts that are there, um, are flowing, but there's not enough culverts. You have to drain Jesus and add more.
Oh, wait a minute. Let's talk about the flowing of the color. The ditches themselves. Is that not the county's job to maintain that?
The ditches?
Yes, they're, they're maintained.
No, that, that, that's been dug out twice in the last 20, 25 years.
We're supposed to buy out, but we're not showing it to you.
Uh, gentlemen, I hate to interrupt you, but this is not public comment. We need to get back to our work business. I do understand that. I do understand that.
We're getting into a big debate here. I understand that.
Well, it's just a case that they shouldn't be cleaning those ditches out of.
There's only one covert that works in that whole road.
Hey, I, what I'm asking John is, is, is can we do that?
If we clean the ditches on that road there once a year, the road will be four foot lower in a matter of four years. Five years. Because the ditches that are there, the existing ditches are getting filled from the muck that's leaching out from under the road every time we clean the ditches. Basic. I mean, you have a wet, sloppy soil underneath that road that's freezing and passing and thawing and freezing and thawing. And when it's thawed, it moves. You can take a video of a truck driving across that road and that road is doing this every time a truck drives. And if you make a place for the road base to slump into, which is what you're doing by digging the ditch. Every time a truck or a vehicle goes across and rattles that muck underneath the road, it's gonna reach back in the ditch and be built in a matter of minutes. That's why it's not.
So basically, you're saying that's a waste of time too.
You would lose the road. You're gonna be better off lifting the road. You're, you're gonna be better off putting a, a geo filter down on top of that muck in that quarter. Bringing up a drainage sand or a, or a pervious sand, putting the gravel down and putting the asphalt down. That way. That sand base, because sand doesn't slump as much.
Yeah.
Okay, and if you put the, if you put the jewel bell down, it won't mix into the muck that's underneath of it. Okay, that's gonna hold your base.
It's basically a separation layer.
And that's the recommendation from here on, right?
Okay, and we can't do this until next year, is it?
And the other issue you have is the, why the standing water is there is because, one, there's not enough culverts there. Number two, one of the culverts are, is plugged and there's a, a garage built or a house, I can't remember which one. And where the water would drain to had, if it's back open. I'm not saying that that was the right thing to do. What I'm telling you is you can't just unplug the culprit. Okay, not without getting the attorneys involved. In addition to that, if you put an ample amount of culverts in that road, you're going to need a place for it to drain. You can't just undermine the water and let it flow out because every little bit of sediment that gets into that ditch, flows to that culvert. Is going to have to go into the lake and the eagle or eagle will never let that happen. What you need is if that strip.
We could have needed a trap in somewhere.
Which is in the, in the form of a drainage system or a drainage ditch. We would put an armored ditch in there, um, with, with riprap check dams to catch sediment and then clean water if you had easements, you don't.
Where that original culvert was, wasn't there a use for that?
It wasn't an easement. It was just where the water went. I can't find any proof of any other easement installing. I can find just the one road and the dump site.
It, it ran down between, well, along the lot line. But it, the covert is like 15 feet from the lot line. If, if, if the cover was moved to the lot line, you know, it would be a straight shot.
Well, you guys have some.
The weather runs now, the water comes out of a swamp up there behind the houses. And it runs down to there and then there's water coming down along the ditch along the road. And they combine and they go underneath there and that's the only drain on that whole road that works.
All right, um, let's, let's, let's move on.
I, I would suggest you gentlemen go to a local mission meeting.
Yeah, we do.
I have, I have.
We're all, okay.
Pretty much all.
We need to get out.
All right, we need to.
Yeah, just one, one more thing in my. Thing here and, uh, this is down the big river. Okay, Underhill Road has got some delays with the delivery of the spans of bridge. Uh, I'm told that it could be as late as October. That's the next estimate in October. And, um, because of that, it is possible that that bridge could not possibly be done this year. There's no guarantees, what I'm told. But, uh, it's all kind of engine on one that. Those spans arrive, I mean, they're capable of wrapping. Uh, also, the original grant, which we agreed to. Our co-pay of 50% of the matching fund requirement. Uh, originally, we said 1.2 million was the top of the grant. The total cost on the, uh. Span of the bridge and the excavating work is. 1.43, that, 1,43,890. So it's about, uh. I have a number here. Uh, it's 50,110 dollars less. I think, but. Yes, to the township. However, that doesn't include the paving of the road. So we're gonna hit you 100 feet past the bridge from Valley. So from Valley Road, 100 feet past the bridge.
Right.
Okay, so there's an additional bid on the actual paving of the remainder of the road.
Right.
And that is 220,000 dollars. This is a crush and reshape and a two inch overlay. So it's reconstructing the road. Um, so that 220,000 dollars minus the 15. I had the number here. Okay, it's 94,710 is what half of that is that's left.
If, um, if there was a 50 50 match on a local road.
Yeah, Jeff, if, if this wasn't to be paved and we were to bid it out as a separate project. Just for the paving of the road, that, uh. 220,000 dollars, we would have 80% matching. So if we go along with that 220,000 dollar bid and this is the same company that's doing the work on. The, the other part of the bridge itself, most bitter. Um, 94,000 would be our actual.
Right. You're paying a hundred grand of.
Oh, and that's, that's actually, I mean, you said crushing the existing new asphalt. That's actually bringing in six additional gravel. Which I don't, I think maybe two, uh, more than you need. So if I can bring that down to four inches of gravel because it's a low volume road, I can save money there also.
Does that go? How's the key in both rate, in both directions?
Yes, that's close that, close that.
Okay, but that hopefully it's under Hill with the, with the bridge. That's one problem we don't have to worry about.
That is correct.
So I think, you know, the county's still going 50% on the rest, but I think that's.
Well, that's a deal.
We need that turned down.
Yeah, and we're getting it for 90 tons because 90 dollars a ton is asphalt because they, because they bid it with the bridges. I just took a number of bid on, uh, up in Blue Lake Township and they were at, um, a hundred dollars a ton.
What's the, what's the final number there, Jim?
94,710.
That's our total.
Not, not, that's additional, but it's just the paving.
4 is the 50% of.
So, but, but these are, these are firm prices? What are you looking for approval for the additional money or?
Well, we originally agreed on the 120.
Right.
But that only included so much of the paving.
Right, we did it.
Yeah, yeah. So that would only require 104,000, saving us 15,000 on the original 120. So in order to pay about 105. For what includes no, no paving. So the additional paving would be another 94 on top of the 104.
Yeah.
Right.
So we're talking 2, 200,000 total guaranteed to do the entire length of Underhill Road.
I thought you said 156. Did I hear you wrong? When we were talking earlier, Shane's a number from 120.
Yeah, because I kind of had some numbers wrong, so.
Okay, I just.
Guaranteed 120,000. You said that's 15,000 less. Okay, plus the 94.
We 105.
Okay, which is 198,000 dollars. So if he's looking for a guarantee from the township, 200 grand.
For, for everything.
Everything.
Well, the 120s aren't guaranteed, so you just need the guarantee for the 94.
Well. Yes, that's right, but you also have to recommend the 15 balance. And so if you committed the 120, you only need 104. So that's gonna leave you that, that 15 was committed to the bridges. So what, what Jim's saying is. Take that 15 away from the bridges, add it to the, um. To the, to the, the road and make, then commit 110 to the road. Right, yeah. So.
Okay, so what do you need from us?
We need the figures so we can look at them.
What do you need from us? So basically what we're doing, we approve the match at 50% for 120,000. Now. Judging the figures aside, the total for the match to do the entire road would be up to 200,000 dollars.
Right.
Now, we need a resolution for that.
Are you gonna spend that money on Timberman before you spend it on oils?
We have to do the bridge.
And it's a, it's under Hill and it's the Eagle.
Just talk about the bridge.
I, I understand what you're saying. There's 90 grand there. That you want to spend on oils.
Right.
Okay, which if we, if we didn't do this to Underhill while the equipment was there. While this match is in place at 50%, okay, what we're doing is.
You're doing this again.
Cut our own throat. We're gonna be taking that 100 grand, putting it in the oils road. He's not gonna guarantee it for five minutes. And we'd have to go back to Underhill to repave that at 80 20.
The Underhill bridges were already approved. That's the Eagle grant.
And that's what we had to do.
I understand that, but I'm saying here we go again, you know.
Oh, I understand that. The, the, the thing about it is, is the, uh, overlayment, and he's saying because. Your contractor's booked. Okay, they don't want any more work this summer.
Yeah, when your new village comes in, if you want to spend it on that, it's not gonna happen until next year.
Well, why don't you tell us that last January we were.
I would like to see us.
All right, let's, we're, we're beating that horse here, but.
We'll look into it.
To get back to the point in, in question here. Do we need a resolution to basically up this match?
Well, if you pass the motion, I'll prepare the contract and send it to you.
Okay.
Or can you prepare the contract and we can go down on that the next week? Is that fine?
Just one thing to keep in mind, Rob and I have to do, redo the contract with Mr. Underhill. Because if this right table.
I got a question about that one.
Something to, to that before you ask the question, they might answer it. The bridge isn't gonna be here till Oc- October. The, 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 the bridge vendor, credit, said the material won't be able to be able to October now. The permit for the bridge to Eagle actually expires in October.
Oh.
So we, we think we can extend that. Okay, we think we can extend that permit, okay, and allow us to go into November. The, so if we can extend the permit, we can get it done in November. The contractor still has a 2024 completion date on this project. The rule, the, the, the language we put in the contract was it, it can only be extended upon mutual agreement. With that being said, let's say we extend that and we get the bridge in at the end of October, the bridge is done. Now we have seasonal limitations on paving. Nobody, I mean, in Northern Michigan, the seasonal limitations on paving is November 1st. Okay, but if we have good weather on November 1st, I as the owner, um, I can extend those seasonal limitations based on weather. But you don't want to pave when there's.
Frost.
Rain pending. I, I think it's more, it's more of the moisture, the rain, okay? But if everything's clear and dry, I can give them the permission to pave past those seasonal limitations. Up to November 15th. I think they wrote that. I think the workers wrote that language in there. Nothing past November 15th ever, okay? They wouldn't want. So, so even M dot in the specification, uh, standards of specification says nothing in, in this region after November 15th. Period. So if they can get the bridge, get it in. So if they can get the bridge, get it in, even if they're two weeks early on delivering the bridge, I don't think we're gonna have a problem getting it done, okay? But there is that timeline that we're against. That's why, that's why I'm telling you that.
As for the, um, Bobby Underhill, paying him to continue using his road, shouldn't that come from the county road because the county road bridges are the reason we have that problem, right?
The local road bridges.
Well, you, but are you responsible for the bridges?
No, they're local roads, they were township, they were township roads that townships couldn't afford the maintenance. Turn them over to the road commission for their, for their preventative maintenance. That's why there's an eighty-twenty match requirement, because in nineteen thirty-one, all the townships went to the road commissions and said, we can't afford to maintain these roads. We need the road commission to take them over. And that's why you have a difference between a local road and a primary road. A primary road is a county road before nineteen thirty-one. A local road was for township roads, and the township supervisor was the road commissioner of every township that maintained their roads. So because they couldn't afford to maintain them in the, in the, in the standard that was required, they asked the road commissions to take over the local roads for the routine maintenance.
Okay.
Just to finish up real quickly here too, uh, we've had a lot of meetings at the road committee and that, we place soil road very highly on that list for completion. I'm gonna be a cheerleader till we hear, get something done in there, because I think it's, it's fair.
Yeah, absolutely. Can we consider including all that?
All, Calcasper County. Yeah, and I'm not taking away from the E dot Hoyle's road.
Right.
Just don't let you put a two hundred thousand dollars in a year from now, people's gonna say you just paved that, you just redid that road, you're not redoing that road.
Can we, can we at least, uh, gentlemen, complain about all those, can at least get somebody out there?
That's already, um, doced, and I I'll make that call tomorrow, I mean, it will be done tomorrow.
And let's talk to that attorney about including that.
Yeah. Could we do a, a peeling deal on it and chip and relay?
No.
No. Something that, uh, would just.
So, yeah, I don't wanna continue this conversation.
Right.
But are any, does anybody know where Finch Creek Road is?
Yeah.
Finch Creek, yeah.
Yeah, it's a sponge.
It's a sponge, it was a beautiful gravel road that never had any problems. And they went in and they paved it, and what happened to the pavement one year later?
It's just like this, it doesn't, it's a crack.
When a road's gravel, or when a road, the biggest, and coils drive, the biggest piece of asphalt's two inches in diameter at best, okay? But because that road's always doing this.
Yeah.
Those cracks move with it. When you put a new stem of asphalt on top of all of that, that's doing this, it's gonna be like putting a, a warm butter on, on, on toast, right? As soon as you bend that toast, that butter's gonna crack. It's the same thing with the.
You know, I can show you that's not the case.
Well, yeah. You only cost a hundred thousand dollars, I could, I could be very wrong.
I can show you that, and I think, you know, I ain't getting wrong, I mean, the, the road might, it's floating, but I don't think it moves all that much. And I think right now, there's other water that would be in the ditch, that would be going down all those culverts. Where do you think it's going? Right now, it's going under the road, under those logs, and it's going under our lot, and it's in between, our drive between our two driveways, halfway down our lot, it pops up there and it's running down my driveway. And we put it in our crawl spaces and everything, it's, it's, it's going under the, under the ground. And, and that base is still there, that base is still there, and it's, it, there's two small spaces where the base, spot for the base looks like it sunk, and they're, they're this small, they're like bigger meters, you're sitting. But, uh, uh, the rest of it, it's there, it's firm.
Excellent.
I'm, I'm sorry, but I've been here for two hours and fifteen minutes of being quiet, and I'm, I'm frustrated.
And it's not gonna get resolved.
Now we're not gonna do it.
Yeah, no, we're gonna work on, see about Zimmerman, well, Zimmerman Road.
Okay. Recession at nine fifty. Reconvene in ten minutes.
I wanna add something here before we quit.
You want me to prepare the contract and send it over to Jim and then?
Yes.
Sold out, okay.
For the Underhill project, yes, okay.
I also wanna let you know, I contacted about changing the road down here, and we weren't hearing back. And I asked Tom, and he didn't hear back, so Jennifer, I asked her tonight, and she said, um, I said, you're gonna be getting a hold, do this? We need an engineer to do this, or we need to get somebody else. She said, I am, I had sent an email to the road commission, but haven't heard back from them. I will make it a priority to reach out tomorrow, so she's gonna call you tomorrow. And I, she says, sorry, was not aware Tom was waiting to hear from me, or the urgent center. So she's gonna call you tomorrow about changing the lanes and what, whatever has to be done for Rapid City.
What, do you have her last?
It's Graham, you have her number, you want it?
Yeah.
Okay, it was Hodges, now it's Graham, huh? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Joanne, just for public safety, obviously we didn't have any, there was a quorum, just tell them the next one's Monday, so.
Oh, okay.
Obviously, you know, don't do the last one.
Okay.
The way I'm Monday, so our next one's.
Yeah, we gotta, okay. I'm off.
Be here on Monday.
Most likely.
And we will all be embarrassed, the whole thing will take all of our years for a longer ride, and there's yet to come.
We're getting it, we're getting it.
Making some statement.
You're done, right?
I don't, I don't think right is, I think right.
Yeah, it's moving.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I know, but here on engineering, you gave us a price of five hundred. So that, that serves us as a reward.
We didn't soil it.
You don't think in the rip, the five hundred?
I honestly don't.
It's not, well, um, I, I don't say it away.
Look, it's not fixing, I'm just gonna put this layer with a.
The only thing I, because.
Remember what you said, okay, and then he's gravel on that and the.
I have this better one, wisely, the road commission.
Well, you think this layer is gonna be, it's holding this like for the.
I mean, I don't think you'd wanna go by it.
It's floating.
It's the same thing.
Another proposal, we've had, it's tiresome.
Well, and I get that, and.
The same, yeah. It's still gonna be floating.
I see.
He's hoping, he said something, it's gonna float the same.
I don't wanna take away from that.
It's gonna float the same.
I've seen this law, I've been there once, I've been on the road more times than people each other.
Cause you're an engineer.
Okay, I get it.
Yeah, that might be.
These flexible road.
So I can do that, I get your phone number.
The only thing I can tell you right now is.
Cause I think you should.
And then when you say the base has been there for.
The Z N S, Z E L A's.
You can't break that road in the smaller.
Two, three, one.
Right?
Three, nine, two.
The road has lost, that's the E last, the E amoltsions, that's in it.
Yes, we don't want to fail either, we don't want to fail either. Maybe they can explain it to you how I don't know.
And once they dig out their base, then, you know, if what they have isn't as good as been sitting there for.
So it'll be a canal of water, you can take boats down to your house.
Yeah, right.
It has been discussed before to make a sewer system there that would hook up. Yeah, sometimes they do that, community sewer, Marv has one over his Interlock Township, and it's a special. Anyway, they make it for sewer, and, um, the people there.
Well, I, I think those culverts that could be put in, they could be put in a pipe, if you will, a sewer pipe underground so that, that the people, I mean, there are setbacks on houses, so there's room to do it. So you could, you know, put in a, a drain, you know, a pipe all the way down to the lake. And what happens is, is when they dig it out, I've been there for twenty-five years, that ditch has been dug out twice in that previous time. Last one was almost like ten years ago, and when they dig it out, there's.
And, and again, I'm not taking away.
There you can watch the water.
This is only covered in this case.
Out of the, drive out the ditch into the ditch.
A road.
And then it.
I just feel like we need to get Eagle involved.
A lift. That's the threat coming on, it's flowing, so no matter what's in the basin.
Yeah, so that. Where, where you dig, underneath the, the logs, underneath the ground, all the way.
Only Mr. Boyd has put that road with logs, so.
It wants to go.
Oh, yeah.
So you, you're.
Whoever did it when they were.
The water's gonna flow, that's how we accommodate it.
Yeah, that's where they built, we built Chicago one, and what they did, it's a lumber road.
If I dig those ditches.
And so they, they built all the sewer. And lay down the road bed, you know, they had the gravel, and then it was paved over it like we wanna do now. And that, that's been there for.
The water.
So little logs, getting water.
Perfect, there's one right across.
But it's not the road.
And it's sticking up a little bit, and it looks like it.
We can spend millions of dollars fixing it, water's still.
Because it's down in the water, it's, you know, it's for sure. You know, a lot of heat sort of.
You have to play this slow to the lake.
You have to make it dry enough.
Maybe we want to make a floating road.
Yeah.
But it, it.
Under your road.
I don't give a.
But, but, and right now, where they, that exits, whatever, when they do a driveway and all, they, they just take it, they put it over the, the road surface, because like he says, it's chunks, it's big. What's happened to the old two-inch? It's, it's all crap, and it's all little pieces.
Do you think a two-inch going over?
And, and what happens is, water comes in, then a car will drive over, and it probably pressure pushes it, and that little chunk comes out. One chunk, another chunk comes out, and that's where these holes are right now. You've got holes that are this big, and that goes away, and it goes down into the gravel, and, and they're, they're this deep. And it's bigger round. And it could keep getting bigger, and right now, about, about three quarters of that road surface is packed. I mean, and then these areas where they just put a, a layer, this thing, not two inches, this thing. Over the top of that, that holds it all ways, it's been there for like ten years because all those little chunks can't come out. You know, the water can't get in, they can't, they can't move, it just holds them in place.
I'm not saying that.
Show you those little areas with that much overlay, but that much, and it stays.
You, you're gonna have to ask someone.
They're not there, old road.
I definitely wanna, wanna get something done, I, I understand, I've driven it, and I only drove once. And it's like, yeah.
Come down right now, just drive it, drive it.
Get my hell over to go there again, my car might fall hard.
Well, it, it's, it causes a lot of destruction to a lot of cars, because some people just kind of slide through it, I mean, it's really.
Yeah, I don't know, I guess we're going back, I will take care of that, Sam. See what I can do, yeah. I will see.
Okay, Mr. Leview, are you done?
Uh, you want me to continue to look into?
Yes.
That.
The loan.
Code, loan.
Yeah, the installment program, yeah, but what he's saying is, there's no reason to work on Hoyle's, let's fix it currently.
That's what I'm suggesting, I will do whatever the town, I will have you a price for a two-inch overlay and gravel shoulders for Hoyle's drive. These, these gentlemen, um, I'm not a tax-free and clearwater township, they are in your board.
Right.
And they think it's worth spending two hundred thousand dollars, and the board's willing to go along with it, I will get it done. But I want to be very clear, that's what I'm telling these, I want to be very clear that that is not my recommended fix.
It's not a permanent solution.
Nobody's gonna come back on me a year from now if it fails.
It's not a permanent solution.
Okay, I'm telling you, my experience, I'm an engineer, okay?
That's fine.
I got, I got badges matches from your university.
Your experience.
All right.
And I'm saying I.
It's not a debate. We're excited. Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We'll check out.
Yeah, thank you.
They're not gonna be able to do anything until next year anyway, so we have time to review this situation.
So in one month, we drop?
It'll be the next one. Four that determines what happens with Hoyle's road, but we will explore the possibilities.
We can determine it, we've got six months yet.
They considered a motion.
Yeah, we can get it in motion, we got six months yet, I'm not even up.
Well, I understand that. But let's, first, let's consider the other option, so. All right, moving on.
So about it.
I'm sorry, gentlemen, we couldn't come to a solution.
Okay.
Hearts and Red.
Well.
I gotta ask you. Can I ask you one thing? If you do it the way Huron says, you will guarantee it. Okay.
So what we have to do is explore how to get the money to do some of that Hoyle's.
We didn't have, we didn't have a quorum, so.
I don't know, that's, that's debatable too, because what are you gonna do about the rest of those, you know, our land's gonna be going through this.
Well, it depends on what the installment payments and the interest payments are, okay? They won't take out the entire budget.
And I'll pay something on paper to get it to. And again, you know, talking about that, and now I can, you know, I mean, I'll, I'll try to be clear without being irritable. Let's say you do put that overlay on. And I know, I can be there, right, and it does last five years, ten years. I don't think it will, but maybe it lasts two years. Right?
And they're not gonna pay to fix it.
That maybe it lasts.
The township is.
Right, so I mean, that's. Are you willing to spend the two hundred thousand dollars to potentially keep the can down the road? That's the question you guys have to answer, I'll, and, and you're still not fixing the water problems, because even if you put another cover in there, or open the one that's up, if you're raising, no matter what you do, let's say I put a two-inch overlay on that road, you're raising that road two inches, okay? Right now, you know who has water problems. You raised that two inches, and people come up and tell you that I never had water problems before you raised that two inches. Now you create a whole other set of problems. They could've had those water problems for twenty years and never said anything, the minute you lifted it up two inches or changed anything, and they say that now I have water problems without fixing it right. That's why I'm weary about doing stuff like that.
If you, but when you fix it the way Huron says, five hundred and three thousand, drainage, everything will be fixed, right? And it's guaranteed, okay?
That's why I said.
Yeah.
Yeah, how much does Huron say about?
Five twelve.
Five twelve, and that was, that's two years ago.
No. No, it's the same time as Zimmerman was.
They're suggesting spending half of that.
Yeah, I know that, but it was two years ago.
No. It's, it's due, it was a year ago, it was last, when was it, it was May, wasn't it? Jim?
June twelfth was Zimmerman.
Last, time flies, Tom.
I like the idea of buying.
County road doesn't wanna finance it, do they? Get a little interest? Okay, how about the county commissioners?
The only way they can buy it is go to voters, you get commercial, the buy bond, and buy it back in the village.
You know, our whole one mil county line only raises about eight hundred thousand dollars. We have eight hundred and fifty-one miles of Hoyle's drive, you know?
And everybody wants to be first.
Everybody wants to be.
Well, these guys have been put off forever.
But I also want to play one last second, I'll get out of here. Okay. Remember what clearwater township road like ten years ago.
Well, then.
West Plum Valley, I would, I would trail, uh, on circle, Wilhelm.
By circle.
By circle, you guys come a long ways with money, you, you, you spend it wisely, and you spend it wisely by not doing the worst first.
Yeah.
I remember.
We can't put off the worst anymore, because what if we live there?
You wanted to use Zimmerman and Hoyle's traffic, you have done so well, I mean, even Valley. The township, and since you've gotten this millage, at working with the road commission, has taken care of all your quick fixes.
Yeah.
Hundred thousand dollars at a time. What do you have left? But if you would've went backwards, if you would've went Hoyle's Zimmerman first, you would just be starting out those hundred thousand dollar fixes. So you did it.
Well, and the, and the millage increase wouldn't have passed.
Correct. Correct. You fixed a lot of roads. At this point, when you get oils on Zimmerman Road, you start doing, start a gravel road program for your residents because I would, if I had to guess, I would say forty, fifty percent of your residents live on gravel roads. I could be wrong. And you start fixing those gravel roads, a lot of them want to live on gravel roads, they just want to live better.
Yeah.
And you start a gravel road program and every once in a while, throw a chip seal on one of them roads you just fixed.
And maintain.
You're, you're, you're maintaining your roads forever for minimum one.
Yeah.
So it's, you, you did it right. Clearwater Township did it right.
Thank you for that.
By focusing on the, the little fixes first.
Thanks for our committee here. We've got a great road committee.
Yeah.
Well, and I like that. I mean, it's, it's always helpful to me when I see a five year plan. Uh, and, uh, you know, this started, I think, with Larry Dieterstadt, Mr. Dieterstadt. I, I still have the yellow dog, he's speaking to me with his first vine here.
Yeah.
Shallow, that was a.
That was really bad.
It was. It was. In that road, we did the, in overnight. Because it doesn't get the, the traffic value when it's not floating, but, um, anyway, that's, that's, I appreciate your time.
Well, thanks for, for coming in.
Yeah, well. I hope to dress for church, but I.
But I have friends in family that come up here all the time, they're, they're impressed that what they do is how do you guys maintain your roads so well?
You know.
Yeah, and I'd say, where do you progress?
I went to Grand Traverse County Road yesterday because I'm working on something else. Met a guy and he says, he was so impressed, you've got two mills. I said, yeah. He says, Grand Traverse has no road.
Two people we got on time.
Nobody on Zoom, but we still have five on Facebook.
All right. Parks and Recreation, there was, uh.
Yeah, we got these.
Didn't last month, they asked that person, how do we accept donations?
Yep, and I did find that out. Lisa said, I asked Lisa because she does that stuff. She, but I will double check that. Yes, they can, a donation is not tax deductible. If you give it to us, the government, no, it's not tax deductible. We can, someone wants to donate a hundred thousand dollars, it can go into the park fund. They just have to know it's not tax deduction.
Okay.
That's like, she said a C one nine or something like that, and it's not taxable. So, yes, it can, the question is, they can give it to us, we can put it in, put it in the parks.
As far as tracking funds, that's their job. They're supposed to have their budget, they're supposed.
If it comes in, they will, yeah. But like, they, yeah.
All right.
They just have to go to us.
Uh, we already talked about the seventy-two property.
Yeah.
And then they just wanted us to know that they're working on the ball parks and the spurboards might need an electrician or a repair.
And I have, um, Craig and I both walked with these two companies. We would like to get an answer, okay? Um, Integrity Asphalt, they actually do roads and they do other things like this, but they did Dieter Drive. And he actually has come to our summer board meetings and he lives on Longham Road, he's in the township. So we walked over everything with him and you'll see the bid there. And also I asked Pitcher Perfect. You didn't? This is my main.
Oh, did you stick it with your first report?
No, I didn't. I thought I had another one, I guess. Those are the two I asked and we, Craig and I walked with both of them around there, so they both saw the same thing. And there, there's quite a difference there. So I, um, I had somebody ask why the difference. I didn't talk to Pitcher Perfect because I, this is just hard to read, okay? I had trouble reading it, the whole thing. But what Integrity does, um, you'll see on here someplace where they, they spray it on, like they do our driveway out here, they spray it on. Um, Integrity actually power washes the whole track before they do it. And you can see in there, they, they will cut out sections larger in, they take out, um, they take out repair cracks caused by removing roots and patching areas back in infrared low areas. Um, I don't understand all that stuff, but that's what they do. And they, and they brush it on. And they're, um, the custody, viscosity, it's like I'm a it's thicker, they're brushing it on. So we're going to get a, it's a lot more. And I did ask them because the parks asked too, what would it be to asphalt the whole thing? And he said, oh, you don't want to do that. He says, it's still pretty good. So you, that's what he said, because this is a specialty, you know, um, so. I like what Pitcher Perfect did out here. We have, up there, we've got a whole different situation. So do we want to just coat it? Fill in a few cracks or we want to do something that will, will last? So I couldn't make that, just, I couldn't even advise. So I, I got both of those and if someone else wants to call and ask and, and figure out, um.
Well, I'm looking at total linear feet, three hundred and nineteen.
And crack feet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's the way I read it.
Okay. Yeah, you're right. Hot or crashing.
Yeah, and they say steel coast, twenty-three thousand seven hundred and sixty feet. On that, I don't see what that'll.
That's square feet.
Yeah.
Parks.
By that by six.
Parks asked me to do a bitch, you know, I'm not doing that.
So you're looking at, uh.
It's a bring application.
Four thousand feet, linear feet of trail.
I've read it, read it, read it. What we decide is coming out of parks.
Do they want us to make a decision on that tonight?
Yeah, we want to get.
Their recommendation, they need to put it in their report.
They asked me to get this and get this to you and, um, we.
Repair all cracks.
They don't have it on me.
Don't know why they didn't, because they asked me to do it, because they want to get it done. You can wait another month, I guess.
Oh, I mean.
Twenty months.
That is decided, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't either, so I'm just waiting.
Well, I would ask Parks and Rec, do they want to spend twelve thousand or do they want to spend six thousand?
They've got this. They, they've got all this. I emailed to them.
Right, but I'm.
Yeah, what did I have to do?
They haven't said, they want to, I said this one's a lot more and they said, well, how do we compare apples to apples? And I said, I'm looking at this, I don't know how to do that. Does anyone else know how to do that?
Basically, uh, the power washing, basically.
And the brushing and on instead of spraying it on.
Yeah.
That doesn't fix those humped up.
No, they take those all out. And in this here, there's little indentations, which will, they specify in here how many are. And they're going to be racing those up, they said here. He tells cracking is a result from multiple issues, some are normal cracking and aging. Um, the soot's coming up, if you walked, you can see there's actually shoe mat coming up through the whole thing. Craig is going to do the edging. But, um, he says a coda areas for cracks are, cracks are larger than one inch, and he tells how he's going to do that. Infrared repair. Dep, oh, infrared repair depressed areas to bring back to level because there's some that, there's dips. So they're actually going to take care of those too.
Okay. Contractors, the edge overgrown grass to thoroughly clean before applying protective coat of commercial sealing. Okay, so they're going to clean this too. Your six thousand dollar one. Right in number one. This will improve traction durability. Additionally, we will add a diamond shield, fortifier and da, 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 date and curing. Contractor is to edge overgrown grass thoroughly cleaned before applying a protective coat. So basically what they're saying is they're going to clean the path before they seal it.
They're going to, they did it, so we don't have to pay Craig to do it.
Craig's going to edge.
They said they're doing.
No, they're not edging. No. Well, I was walking with them. I don't know why they put there, but Craig volunteered, he says, you don't have to edge, he's going to edge. So I don't know why they put it there like that.
Doesn't matter, but the edging and the cleaning is going to be done before the seal game is finished. So you're a new hole bit, right here's twenty-five seventy-five, right off the bat.
Can I ask a question? What if we pressure wash the rest? Do we have to pressure wash?
Do we have a pressure washer?
Well, we used to, I don't know.
We have to have a weight, we have to have wa, a way for water up there. There's no plumbing, no faucets.
Well, how are they going to do it if there's no water?
They probably have a, a tank that they carry on their vehicles.
You guys, yeah.
I don't. I don't know, I don't know. I just brought this up to you. Yeah. I don't even know how Craig's going to find the time to do it, but that's, both of them, he told him he was going to add.
Well, we can't make a decision on that because they didn't give you their recommendation and.
No, they, they knew you guys said, they knew that the board had to decide, so they weren't going to do anymore.
Well, under number three, I see there's four hundred and thirty-six square total feet. And look to me, they're going to do the infrared patching there like we did in the parking lot.
Yeah.
The same as we did, uh, the fire park or two, which I, it's held up real well on the press, you know, Sam. So I think his thirty-four hundred dollars is the same as this guy's eighty-four.
Yeah. It's not checked off though, because it's not going to do it.
Yeah.
Because when I see those, the square. But it's not, it's not part.
Yeah. And then on repair at eighty-four hundred, he says estimate only, yeah?
And this guy's got it all marked out as to where they're at, eleven by eight and then a region hill curve on the hill, I think that is. Seven by five, two eight by twos. Seven by five.
And then also in the back of that, there he says, Integrity says, uh, any additional damage that may occur during a he's not real definite with this, um.
What's his price?
That may occur due to unknown circumstances, costs associated with repair may be added to a final invoice and contractor's not responsible for associated. So some damage happens when he's doing it, it looks like. This is an estimate only based on measurements and best of knowledge. Final price may reflect alterations of material and or time needed based on conditions found to inhibit production. Adjustments over ten percent will be discussed and approved before work continues. We look forward to more. Okay. Honestly, the sixty-three sounds better to me, but I.
Was it Pitcher Perfect that did our stuff?
Yeah, that's why I asked them, I called them. It's a man in.
That's all board and squeezy done. Because I watched them do it, yeah? I mean, you know, just by what I can see here, you know, by the pressure I have from Pitcher Perfect, I will go with them.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too. Somebody make a motion.
I mean, but it's, it's just double what's double, is that? You know? And I make a motion that we accept, uh, sixty-three eighty-three from Pitcher Perfect for Ayrty Park walkway path repair. See you, Cody.
We'll see how it holds up, see how it goes. We can waste, yeah.
Well, they can take them. I don't see anything about the roots, so is that that so we don't have any money?
I think that works. This guy, yours, he's got the little spots.
Mm-hmm, they're, they're little.
Getting underneath it and bringing it up.
I don't know how they do.
They eat it back up, they do asphalt.
Did you say it's second back?
It's like recycled land.
Not yet, I'm just listening to you say.
They were trying to go on underneath it and raising it up.
So this is asphalt repair. Seven by five, eleven by eight, seven by five.
Cut off everywhere roots.
So basically, they're, they're going to cut out the roots and the asphalt, relay a base and then reseal it.
See where yours is extended by five, what, three wood powder, like they did it, right by the side, hard to move. On Little Hill, fourteen by thirteen on.
And that's the difference in the price right there, four grand.
He's saying there could be a lot of, like, so it's kind of.
We have a motion in.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, I'm looking, second.
Okay, nothing to accept a big, good from Pitcher Perfect. So what will be in on them? For her to charge walking path repairs. And seal. To be paid for. Tom Backers?
Yes.
Joan Childs?
Yes.
Albert Keys?
Yes.
Christine Johnson, yes? Bert Bradley?
Yes.
I would like to mention one more thing. Andrew Holbert is doing a lot of work on that ball field. And he will be mowing, we understand they're working it out because he'll be mowing and trying to get that back in shape, so it's going to take work off of Craig. Is there any way that the township can pay part of his wages to do that? I would say at the, the same as our deputies and then parks pay something.
From an accounting standpoint, I can't split it like that.
Okay. But if saving. Craig will get a lot more done by not having to do the whole thing himself.
And they would have to have a recommendation from the Parks and Rec Department.
Management, okay, so I have to get a recommendation from Parks or, yeah. I told Andrew, keep track of us hours, he's really working out there because there's people want to play on it. And we have to, he's actually managing that part. He's, he's looking out, he's trying to find people to play on it besides getting it up and going.
And we'll see that, yeah, the park is within the law there at this point.
Oh, yeah.
Did we know?
There's a lot to do.
Yeah.
So Parks and Rec. I didn't hear a roll call or something.
You said yes.
That's right, I did.
Tired.
I know.
What's the deal with our banners?
I don't know, it's up to, Michael Span is dealing with all those banners.
Deal with tree burial questions.
Where's that? Oh, that's on the, on the agenda? Yeah, that's what I just got. I don't see how we can start that.
Somebody wants, somebody wants to plant a memorial tree on one of our access.
On Torch Lake Access.
Yeah, well.
Let's put a capsule and put a tree in there.
I understand that, but.
No, we can't allow.
We don't want to surprise them there. If they want to, if they want to plant a tree in Memorial to, to wherever, put the ash of underneath the tree, but I'm putting it on Washington Trail, it here it is, yeah?
That would be a better idea, yeah.
The nature trail down in Freedom East.
Yeah, we, we can't start letting them do it.
I mean, that way, if somebody else wants, you got plenty of room, you know?
Well, somebody plans a tree down in, like, kids clean with it, kill it.
That, where can we allow people to do that legally?
Well, the thing about it is, is it's actually a burial.
It, yeah, which needs to be in cemetery, so there could be a designated area in the cemetery for doing that, but no, not just.
A lot of people are using seven bridges. I've watched them do it.
It was big official.
That was years ago.
That's seven bridges.
You don't need an official, that, we say the board says wrong there, but what are we doing?
Make, make what official?
The tree burial. I think it needs to be in the ordinance. Cemetery ordinance.
That, then, well.
I wouldn't get, you know.
We don't want a can of worms.
But they're talking something totally different, yeah.
I, this is, this is outside the cemetery.
Yeah.
Okay, if they want to plant a tree in one of the parks. And stick a, a aspen or evidently this is a.
They want to be along Torch Lake, is what they want. They want a torch lake. We can't do that.
Absolutely, you can tell them.
That's what they're asking. And I said, we can't start that, it'll be a lot of course there.
Tell them, no.
Well, if it's going to be an official board decision, this is, I'm going to make a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
No more tree planting on any public access sites on Torch Lake or Torch River.
Right.
You know?
Well. Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't get all the wording for that.
Maybe they got a. Maybe they gotta, somewhere up here they know they can plant it theirs.
No memorial tree planting on Torch River access, or, or Crystal Beach access on Torch Lake. You wanna ban them from the parks down here to town or? No, I, I don't, if they wanna plant a tree in one of the.
So they decide, hey, soccer field's a perfect place to put a tree.
No.
We have places along Heritage Park, they can plant a tree.
Along the trail, yes, I mean.
Down here wanna walk the trail and plant it, you don't know.
Well, along our walk, we could use.
Well, the thing, the thing about it is, is if you got a request like that, the, the board would pick the location.
Yeah, no, they're just asking for Torch Lake, and that's why I said we can't do that.
So lake ass website.
And you can't see a tree being planted down here, surviving, with kids slamming all over it, just.
And we're gonna be renovating those lake ends.
So Greg make a motion.
So plant a tree, and then we come in, we're gonna.
Move it. You just moved my dad.
I will second that.
Yeah.
I think that's not money, so.
We don't want that money.
The decision.
Uh, well, actually, it's an official request, and it's an official decision, so let's have a roll call vote on it, and that makes it emphatic, it'll be in a minute.
So the motion is that it's not going to be allowed.
Right.
Not invisible.
Albert Keys?
Why are you gonna vote on that? That was worded wrong.
No.
No? Yeah.
Do not allow, no.
We're still resolved that you don't wanna.
No, you're voting yes, that you don't want it.
Voting yes to say no.
What? I'm confused now.
I'm gonna say yes. Tom Backers?
Yes. I guess.
Joanne Childs?
I guess I'm, yes, that's right.
Bert Bradley?
Yes again, a yes means no.
So how's that motion? What was that?
That there be no burying or memorial tree planting at.
Yeah, yes is right.
Yeah, I know.
So basically, we just banned.
Yeah.
Memorials, period, from the access sites.
And I know there was more wording for that, and I'll get that off the reporting. So that's official, that's our official answer on that.
Yep.
Hey, S T R review day.
Well, we're doing the banners.
Banners.
The banners, that's up to Michael Span, he was, so he hadn't gotten to it, maybe he has by now in your report. And we're hoping to get them up this summer.
So, put it on your next month's agenda.
We made the, we pulled that to Pro Web, but we haven't gotten a second of that.
S T R, review day, is that where we're at?
Yeah.
December.
December. I'm feeling that.
Is, is it going through, is the state actually gonna be making, I know what's, have they changed their mind or whatever, the state is, is working on that? So whatever we do, it's gonna be.
The state, if you read it thoroughly, the state is gonna accept ninety-nine percent of what the townships have in place. The only thing the state is wanting is. The licensing. The tax fee. They want their top off the top, that's what, yeah, it's for the licensing.
Oh, okay.
It is the money, yeah, to the money into the.
Can anybody do Saturday, June first?
Nope, I will be while I fishing in, so you don't make. Home with a tree, lots of quarters.
Whoa, I fish in a new P right now.
Hey, we got twenty-eight of last year to do.
How about the eighth?
How about what?
The eighth.
The eighth is fine with me.
If you do it in the morning, there's a lot of graduations going on right now, in June and now, they have to be in the morning.
Well, a lot of it's similar with the eighth, I open house until, oh, we didn't fourth of July anymore.
Yeah, but I mean, I don't, I've got several.
Be, uh, uh, ten AM to noon, they can.
Or nine, can we do it at nine instead?
No.
I'm not, I'm not.
It's five.
Right enough to get here at ten, what are you talking about?
I don't like the first. Okay, so we're looking at June eighth at ten AM.
All right.
How close are we getting done?
We're getting close. That's cause we're into where the all of discussion is getting heavier.
It's hard to get through it, cause there's so much discussion.
Well, I understand that, but. Said you don't wanna make a mistake and make, bring up the ballot points.
That's true.
So, um, okay, uh, digital sign up data, I already went by that, that's, uh, supposed to start happening next week, so. Okay, Ian, Ian Detroit, did you give me the?
Did Craig find more stuff?
Yeah, I've got two quarters there, okay, I'll take care of that, and then we'll try and get that down to dollars and cents in a letter to the insurance company.
Did Craig finds more missing?
Yeah, he finds more.
You can't, you can't turn this into an insurance company till we know the outcome of this whole can play out. We will find, to find out next week.
Okay.
So, we need to, for, what is it, uh?
July was, July will be here, right?
July, you've got a deadline. Okay, new business.
Uh, we had unfinished business with, uh.
Uh, G F A downtown. Uh, basically, when I talked to Jennifer at G F A, she said she was working with John Rogers on the engineering plan for, when he left her laying in, and, uh.
That's what I read today.
Okay.
She's waiting, and that whole thing, she's gonna call him tomorrow, she already sent him a text or whatever, he never got back to her. So now, she's, I asked her, she's gonna call him tomorrow.
Um, one last thing on the business, but just to go back to the floor.
Right.
We need to put that, we, we need to make sure that that is planned out before this fall, before the new board gets in.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so.
Okay, so like I said, over the holiday season, Christmas and New Year's, when we can cancel the pickleball matches, and everybody's busy anyway. Just like we had the floor redone, okay, so what they need is they're gonna come in, clean the floor, put a new cold year thing down, and then seventy-two hours, that they have.
Worst part about that is that darn smell.
A, a flag to go up saying, hey, this is.
Well, clearly follow this guy here, tell him, put it down, it's scheduled for December, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, between Christmas and New Year's.
And then we can let Angie know, so she can block off the calendar.
It can be a little bit warmer, we can open up the doors, cause that smelled awful for a long time.
There may be somebody that Christmas party scheduled already for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, right now would be good, nobody's using it, and you could open up the doors and windows, summertime, we don't have, so busy.
Well, that's the other thing, it's supposed to be an annual application, before was finished, what, three, six, four months ago, five?
Ask, what if we can do it six months later, is it gonna make that much difference?
Wait till spring.
Cause there's, it's not being used right now, pickleball people are done.
So we wait till May?
I'm not so sure it's here, but it like, still is going on, I'm walking there.
Well, live it.
And that's the whole point.
Can we ask them, Tom would rather do it when it's, we can open up the doors?
I'll send them an email.
Okay.
Okay, ace resolution.
What does that mean?
Evidently, they need some changes to the law. Evidently, like, we're doing, instead of amending the original resolution, to reply, let's see. Optimally property use of retro picks or rehab projects to waive the energy savings guarantee. For new construction, the energy savings guarantee is no longer required. Evidently, what they did was they included TIPAs and a couple other things in here, and they upped the standards in the building codes, basically, uh, which is why they eliminated the energy savings guarantee, because the codes have changed. That is what I got, yes.
You compared that to the old resolution? You compared that to the old resolution?
Uh, no, I didn't, I just read through the, uh, the law changes.
Oh.
I didn't read, not like act, two seventy and twenty-ten, but in order for us to be in compliance with the state law, we need to pass this resolution of amending the original one.
Gotcha.
Which we passed. So, and we don't have a number.
This is something we can do for the addition in town hall.
What?
This is all for private owners, or is something we could use in the town hall?
Okay, we could do it, uh, for remodeling.
I did mention that to Jennifer too. You said, it's been months since she get back, she didn't have an engineer or something, so expect her to call back, and I said, we pulled out Ryan Williams, pulled out the drawings, and they go back, I mean, boards have paid and paid and. We can adapt that, but we need some help.
And number seven?
Number seven? Seven of twenty twenty-four. Okay, motion to adopt the eighth ace program, resolutions amending the original resolution of November fifth, twenty twenty-two, resolution seven, twenty twenty-four. I'll second that.
Tom Backers?
Yes.
Bert Bradley?
Yes.
Joanne Childs?
Yes.
Albert Keys?
Yes.
Christine Johnson, yes?
I like the idea, new window.
You need a new age.
We need a whole bunch of stuff, yeah.
Uh, okay, next on this garage siding bits, I did contact Ryan Williams at the town hall. I haven't seen any of the other bits coming here. This thing's been running for two weeks, do all maintenance, labor only, thirty-seven hundred bucks, finish the garage.
That one guy I told you about, that's a handyman, likes to do stuff? What's his name?
That's been in the paper.
Can I see that?
He wouldn't be going for that, he would be, what's his name?
He also tossed in the roof. I said, can we bid on a roof, what do you, what do you think? I haven't run just yet. Nine grand, we put a new roof and fix all the aluminum trim and socket material on the, on the garage, but that's a different day.
What's his name?
Yeah, get it done?
It's been sitting there, honestly.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we accept this bid for two thousand seven hundred dollars for do all maintenance.
Materials were all there, so.
That's what, that's what Ryan Williams is called do all?
No.
Oh, oh, okay, so we did.
I'll second that move.
What was the price of the bed?
What's that?
Three thousand seven.
Thirty-seven hundred dollars.
What was Ryan's when he said he'd do it?
He didn't submit one. He said submitted one originally, but he included all the aluminum work, and I didn't ask him for that.
And where is that getting paid from?
Where is that getting paid from? Uh.
Yeah, but we have, what do we have in the capital improvement?
Capital improvement fund is where I was thinking of doing this, because that's a, a physical plan preparer, so.
Uh, you have to have a hearing for capital improvement. I hear.
What do we have in the public improvement? Anything left?
Hmm, three thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars. The actual is lost in mine.
Three eight six six eighty-five.
You didn't put lines on those?
Metro was in the hole because Dee accidentally took thirty thousand out, not knowing that we spent money out of there.
Yeah, she was try, trying to put it in Michigan class.
She put it in Michigan class.
Public improvement.
Public improvement?
Forty seventy-five.
Yeah, so no, we've already spent public.
Oh, you've already done that, okay.
So there is money in capital improvement, but you can't designate that until. That's the garage. So. Yes, um.
Why don't we?
Thirty-seven hundred, okay, we did budget a certain amount for repairs.
Yeah.
So we can just.
That's the thing. Wait a minute. That art fund wouldn't work that.
I don't think you can use our book for that.
Well, we approved, we had the public hearing, we approved the materials for that without the labor. And we approved the materials for the deck here without labor.
But we did not offer, offer a design.
You said the public improvement would overshot.
The labor is only, is thirty-seven hundred dollars. That'd be something done in a day. Think a couple days, so small. I can't remember the name of that guy.
Uh, we put, uh, thirty-seven thousand eight hundred under repair maintenance building. So that's what we budgeted for the year, thirty-seven thousand eight hundred.
And that's for maintenance?
Yeah. Of buildings.
Okay, so we do have the money.
Well, I mean, our balance is actually okay to cover that right now, yeah. Yeah, if you, yeah, if you look at a actual balance in general funds, it's got forty-six thousand dollars in there right now. I mean, that's gotta last us until the next tax.
You got another thirty-six of Michigan class.
That is, uh, actually, um, pegging Metro and something, the old Iron Bridge.
That's what goes back for re, restock Metro. That's pegging Metro.
Uh, she, well, she took thirty thousand out of Metro, and she thirty, twenty-five thousand out of old Iron Bridge, that's in the general. Yeah. I don't know what else she took out for general.
It's liquid, we can pull it out.
Yeah. Well, I mean, you can't use the old Iron Bridge Espro for that.
No, no.
That's twenty-five thousand, and that's designated funds.
You're gonna get a little more.
We do have the money to spend that, and.
Yeah, it's only thirty-seven hundred, we spent more than that on our phone bill.
Go call.
Yeah.
I.
Have your wit drawn, your emotion?
You wanna wait?
I made my motion to set, to accept a quote for thirty-seven hundred dollars.
Do I have to note that in the minutes that you rescinded your motion, when we re-motioned?
We didn't get a second, did we?
Yeah, Greg seconded it.
Yeah, I already seconded the, the original one.
We have to vote. We have to vote to rescind it, and then start over.
Is that what you did?
That's what I was told.
Those were in San Antonio.
Oh, yeah, that's true, okay, alright.
Roll call both ways, yeah.
Okay.
It's getting late.
It is getting late, I'm gonna say yes, Joanne Childs?
Yes.
Albert Keys?
Yes.
Greg Bradley?
Yeah.
And Tom Backers?
Yes. Okay, the Iron Bridge Repair, I had a guy call, uh, Metal Factory to come out, and, uh, basically to stabilize the bridge. Uh, and I haven't, he hasn't got back the price, it's pretty simple fix. Uh, basically, uh, when they set it down, uh, a couple of the girders bent, so we have to jack that up, we heat them up, straighten them out, and then he's gonna put V clamps. On all four corners of those, and, uh, basically half-inch plate steel. Uh, so that it's stable, and it won't lock, and it will support.
It'll look the same, yeah.
And then, uh, once he gets a price for that, I'll present it to the board, that'll come out with the bridge money, the next thing is getting it painted.
Painted?
Painted.
What are you painting?
We're painting, we're painting the bridge.
Okay, you're keeping the natural, what it looks like now, yeah.
Basically, it took, actually, the original paint was gray, okay, uh, the overcoat was blue.
We wanna leave it looking natural.
Gray, but it has to be clean, and then, and then painted in.
There is a guy in our township, I just found out, because he's gonna do our guard, he's gonna do a bid thing for our guardrails, that's Bob Underhill. He welds, I didn't know that, so he actually is gonna do, he's gonna give Parks an idea, an estimate, bid sheet, whatever, that we can put out. For doing the, the hi- the rails that come down to the walk bridge, and then up the other side, huh, the footbridge, and we want them to be like the footbridge. So he's gonna make sure they're like that.
And then, the other thing is too, is coming up with a place with the foundation, the mount bridge on, but, let's get it fixed first, to make sure it's structurally stable, so we can, we can use it, so. When I get a price for that, uh, I'll, I'll let the board know, and we'll figure that out, Deputy Treasurer.
She starts, we haven't, anything, she starts training her tomorrow, and we will do all, I gotta get someone else there.
Okay, well, she's gonna need to be sworn in.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, Senatorial Fitness Review Planning Commission, we already know, closed session, public comment.
Uh, in my travels around direct sites, we've got a couple hazards we need to address, okay?
Okay.
Uh, we got a park, uh, Crystal Beach Road, we have a park on one side, Peculiarity on the other side, we tell people to park over there, we don't have any crosswalk signs.
That's what Parks has requested, wasn't it? One of them, we were.
Parks did.
And we have to.
Are you talking about both of them, Cedar and Birch?
Yeah, that's what we've been discussing.
You know, and then you've got the same situation over here at Freedom Park. And, you know, I.
Being for crossing Rapid City Road and Crystal Beach Road, so, those little. Crosswalk pylons, yeah, well.
Are you saying the entrance to Freedom Park?
No, I'm, I'm saying, you know, to get to one side, from Freedom East to Freedom West.
Two different places, okay.
Crossing the road, yeah, if you're not gonna use the footbridge, you have to cross.
Yeah, we are, in Parks, Jennifer's been told too, we wanna make that northwest corner handicaps, so we're also looking at that. The handy, because they can park at the entrance of Freedom Park.
So basically, we're looking at crosswalks for.
Crosswalks, yeah.
And that will be after they do their ceiling and that too, right?
That'd be next year.
But you, you know, if you're gonna put regular roadway signs up, you could get them, with our, with our Metro funds, we use on that, well, yeah.
Only thing with the crosswalk, and I did mention it too, about the Freedom Park side, and that is that there has to be those, like, step downs or whatevers, it's wheelchair accessible. Right now, that's not like that, so that would cost us a little bit of money to do.
Yeah, but my point is, we don't have any signs up there for people that's driving up and down the road. To watch out for pedestrians crossing.
Yeah.
That, that's my concern, yeah.
In the school. And the crosswalks actually should be parked.
Yeah, but that would be when the next time they straight.
Definitely the where, where you said at the, the north side there, from the entrance over, so they can, yeah.
As far as Crystal Beach, I think they're gonna be doing an apprenticeship on that relatively soon too, because of the, once the bridge is done, that's what they're waiting for.
I hope they fix those drop-offs that are like this.
But I mean, that may be a good thing. It's not installed, and you'll crosswalk, you gotta, you gotta pay, right, or the only thing, the crosswalk.
Yeah.
Because, you know, if we got parking on one side, and we get across the other way, somebody gets hurt, and, yeah, somebody gets hit by a car, it, we're gonna be liable. You know, especially when we take additional parking across the road.
Because we are negligent.
Yeah, it's kind of rude. All right, motion due adjourned.
Hey, I got one question.
You had a comment, you?
Yes, I do have some. One thing I felt connected to you about that municipal bond lawyer, uh, to write up one of those contracts, it's gonna be like thirty-five hundred to forty-five hundred dollars, somewhere in there. For his legal counsel to obtain the.
And he does it all.
He does it all.
Yeah, it's a metric fund or road commission, or the roads.
I imagine it's, well, that's great, and the loan, but that's.
Yeah.
And I was wondering, what is the new valuation? I know you got some information on that.
Yeah, I didn't get paperwork on that as well, the new valuation, what a mill is, was it up to, I thought, like, a hundred and seventy-six or something, you told me, wasn't it?
For the.
For a mill, what's a mill now?
A mill in our new value. Yeah, a mill is one, one seventy-six, one seventy-six thousand, so.
Yeah.
I can get, all you have to do is.
I like a copy of that, yeah.
Uh, tag of the assessed value or taxable value, and, I don't know, is that a taxable value?
That's three fifty-two a mill.
I have a question, was, did the internet break down a while during this meeting, are you using the new connection for this building?
Yep, we got the password for this.
And there are cameras at Heritage, are there, are they gonna put cameras up at Freedom Park? Because we got some issues there.
I, I know that, and, uh, basically, I, I took them out there, and the original deck told me, he said, oh, the, uh, uh, equipment has to be, uh, you know, weather, weather protected. Facility, and I, and I said, this is electronics, this is solid state stuff. Okay, so, no, we didn't put any security over there, uh, at the moment, I just let it ride, and figured out, did the rest of those stuff set up? We wanna revisit the Freedom Park for security reasons.
John is talking about, you were talking about deer camera, which you could show up on your phone.
Oh, yeah.
That might be right.
Put a recon system out there, that, basically.
Whatever, because there's a lot of crap being dumped there, Craig has to deal with that, they're emptying their, they must be using it.
The other thing, I called Dan Packer, uh, yesterday morning, about removing that, um, garbage over there, and he said, Michael Spann again.
Yeah.
Okay, is supposed to be ordering a ten-yard dumpster, and he's gonna use his tractor and load that up all the way. That's.
Can they use, anyone use that for anything? No?
Basically, if, uh, you know, you call Emmer, they, they re-crush concrete, concrete block and everything, and they just put it right back into the concrete mix.
Who does that?
Emmers. They have a crush. They, like, broke concrete brick block, everything, and, and the EFL has a concrete cracker, yeah. So, and what they do is they mix new concrete with it and pay.
But we would be paying GFL for a dumpster, right?
Well, you'd have to pay to get it up there somewhere, or. Well, they would pick it up, yeah. Basically, if you call Emmer, they said, uh, green dumpster up here, banning concrete blocking, or. That'll all, that'll, Emmer, she, they'll create a crusher. Two adjourns, I mean, they're mostly, they ain't changing, she was clean. It was fun, y'all.
Michelle probably changed her mind, she'll withdraw.
Thanks for watching, everybody.
Thanks for hanging out on the planning commission too.
Yeah.
I guess you agreed to do that.
Is that a regular job?